City Council to order. A little clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Snapper.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens will be back in a few minutes. He was here, he had to leave, he will be back. There are no additional agenda items. Let me just point out one or two things on upcoming agendas. Next Monday, the 25th, we have a presentation from the Tacoma Junction Task Force with their interim report. We also have a work session, discussion of sidewalks. And then, starting Monday, August 1st, we go on recess for the month of August. We come back after Labor Day. Our first meeting after Labor Day is Tuesday, September 6th, and then following Mondays in September. This point, we'll move to public comment, and this will be a chance for anybody to make any comments on anything that is not on our special session this evening. So if you have any comments on anything that's a work session item, or anything that's not on the agenda, if you care to make comments, you can do so now at the podium. Please keep your comments to three minutes. And if you have any comments on anything on the special session voting items, you'll have a chance to talk when those items come up.
Hi, I'm Lauren Chekvidian, with Allen Avenue. Committees, right? That's appropriate for now?
Yes.
Okay. So I submitted some comments in writing last time. Thanks for including them here. One of the really exciting things about the relatively small municipalities is the chance to have, like, really effective participatory democracy. And of course committees are one of the ways that that happens. And I think that the council's aware, but I would just reiterate again, to the unfortunate state of affairs, that too many people on committees sort of have this sense that they're not sure their ideas are going to be taken seriously, or they're not sure that it's not a waste of time, so they'll put in time, and then worry that their issues aren't seriously considered at council. So I really am pleased that this is being taken on, and I think that those issues were reflected in your conversation two weeks ago, or last week, whenever it was. And so it seems like a couple of things would be really crucial, and one is the guidelines, which I know you've been talking about, so having guidelines that really direct the committee about what exactly you're asking for, so committees don't feel disappointed when they come back with more, and then that's not considered. The other is the regular updates and conversation with committees. I do think it's a good idea to have council liaisons, and there's some committees that it seems like it might be appropriate to have council members serving on. And then another piece to consider would be to communicate why, when a committee makes a specific recommendation and council chooses not to implement that recommendation, I think it would be important to communicate very specifically why. I think sometimes it just isn't included in the decision that's made without a specific decision against it. And sometimes that's unpopular, but I do think it's fair and appropriate to communicate why a decision against something is taken. In terms of some of the specific committees, I think a budget committee, a fiscal committee, some committee like that really is crucial. I think that the budget gain showed how many people really are interested in having some input into the budget discussion on an ongoing basis. And I think that really harnessing some of the talent of people who know a lot about budgeting, and being able to do a lot more long-term strategic budgeting, including a lot more creative thinking about income sources that could come from special projects, would be really important. And I also would want the council to think about a public safety committee. I understand there used to be one, and it was shifted to the police chiefs advisory committee. It seems like public safety ought to be a policy conversation that's ongoing. And so while I understand the police chiefs advisory committee is working very well for what it was set up for, it seems like it makes sense for there also to be a committee that's regularly advising council on the ongoing conversations around public safety policy. And I'll stop there. Thanks. Oh, one more question. When is the sustainability coordinator being hired? Is that boasted yet?
I'll look to the city manager for a timeline on that one.
The public works director and I have had a number of conversations. We had met with some folks from Rockville as sort of a starting point. And so Darryl and I will be talking again this Wednesday when we have our regular meeting.
And a sense of a possible timeframe of...
Probably advertising sometime in August. I'll try to take a guess.
Yeah, good. That's helpful enough.
Have something for you when you come back from recess.
Good. Thanks for your comments.
Hi, I'm Catherine Tunis, and I'm here to comment on the committee issue as well. As you know, I was chair or co-chair of the Committee on the Environment since 1993. It was formed in 92. We had a bunch of people burned out. And I tried to keep things going from there on, and I think we did fairly well. I'm not sure exactly how to do this in 2 minutes and 59 seconds, but I wanted to talk a little bit about organizational charts. The organizational chart from the city, if you will look at the charter, is that you have staff that report to, department has, that report to the city manager, I guess that's like one little triangle there. And the city manager reports to the city council. The city council reports to the citizens. They're the voters, but they're also who you represent here on council. Things worked extremely well. The committees are off on the side of the council. They're advisors to the city council. I don't know if there are any committees that are supporting staff, as was said by one council member last, or when you talked about this a couple of weeks ago, which really concerned me, because I felt like that was a real misunderstanding of the organizational structure. When Rick Finn came in, things worked extremely well under Bev Havita. We got an awful lot of work done. Staff was cooperative, the city manager was cooperative, the council was excited and eager to do things. When Rick Finn came here, everything got turned on its head, and I believe that that was largely because of a really screwing up of that organizational chart. Where Rick Finn felt that he was in charge of the staff, and they were his little army, and that council was also under Rick Finn, they were little puppets that he, you know, held on a string, and the citizens were down on the bottom. Not to be listened to, and most of you really had to. It made things very difficult, because council felt like they were in the middle of the staff and the citizens. And it was very difficult, because on quite a number of occasions, the staff would sabotage committee efforts. Rick Finn felt that he needed to know everything that was going by the committee. He felt that the committee should be reporting to him, and that things should be filtered through him before they went to council. It was clearly a control issue. It was clearly not democracy the way we have it envisioned here in Tacoma Park. I felt that some staff members kind of liked that power, and did not want to have a different viewpoint going to council than was going up through their pathway. And it was, it made things very, very difficult. And I think what we need to do is to go back to that charter, go back to the original organizational chart, to make sure that council is representing the citizens and showing leadership to represent those citizens back to the city manager and the staff. And also, I mean, if you've got, if you're going to have advisory committees, they should be advising the council. They shouldn't be having to fight with staff to get a differing viewpoint to the council. So I apologize, the red light is beeping. If anyone would like to have a discussion with me, I'd be happy to do that. I think there are tremendously talented people out there who would be happy to advise council, to go out there and do research on any particular topic. But we had difficulty on the committee, keeping people on the committee, because council wasn't listening. If we would work on an issue and present the recommendations to council, it felt like they died there. And I would like us to go, and there's some terrific staff people. I don't need to malign any individuals at all, and there are some that have, despite it all, the changes of personality at the city manager level have kept that sense of public service. So, but I think we need to make sure that that is there throughout the staff.
Thank you. Mr. Lovell, go ahead.
Hello, my name's Pat Lovell, your official peace delegate. Glad to be back to meetings tonight. I also want to ask people to thank whoever it was that had the idea of rewriting in that 1957 Thunderbird. What happened, ready? Yeah, whoever's idea it was for me to write in that 1957 Thunderbird convertible, I want to thank them very much for it, because everybody since that happened has commended me in the parade, and commended whoever's idea it was. Because, you know, it really added to the Fourth of July, I heard. And also, now that the summertime is here, I can't urge people more anymore to be careful of their children at the city's events, because we've got the Tacoma Park Folk Festival coming up, we've got the National Night Out coming out pretty soon. I don't remember what date that is. I think it's around the 3rd or the 4th. But we've got the National Night Out, and I'd like to have everybody come down and take part in that, and take part against crime. You know, because that's one way we can stand up for our city, is by coming to the National Night Out, and supporting our city in the folk festival and stuff, and also practicing what we preach, by keeping our eyes on our kids, and make sure that there's no shady characters bothering them. Because once a tragedy occurs, it can't be brought back. And again, I was approached by, I got a letter from a citizen who thought that I shouldn't have mentioned anything about people not voting. And I'm not mentioning any names, and I'm not mentioning, I'm not mentioning any voters. I'm not, I understand that there are emergencies, I understand that there are people who, for personal reasons, oppose the voting system, and they don't take part in it. I also understand there are people who don't take part in it for religious reasons and other understandable reasons. But there are people who are just plain lazy, who don't want to come out and vote. All they want to do is sit and want things, everybody else to do it for them. Because I've heard people say, "Well, somebody else will vote for me. Somebody else will do it." There's too much trouble. That's the ones that I'm complaining about. They're the ones that I'd like to see get out there and register to vote. Those are the ones that don't have any right to complain, are the ones who are just too lazy, and too, too much set in their own ways to get out and vote. But this time, we've got to get out and vote, because elections is not that far off when you really think about it. It's only a few more months. You know, we've got the big recess coming up in August, and then we've got September and October, and a couple of days in November. It's not that far. So we've got to get people out there now to register to vote. Remind all your friends and neighbors, remind your parents, and maybe the kids could, maybe the teacher could send home a notice with the kids to remind their parents to register to vote. Thank you for letting me share. Tacoma Park is a wonderful place to live. Great to be a peace delegate at Tacoma Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cindy Di Bella, and I'm vice chair of the Recreation Committee. And there are a couple of items that you'll be discussing tonight that encouraged me to come and speak briefly tonight to you. First is about committees. And on the Recreation Committee, we will be submitting some email comments to you to consider, but basically, we love the idea that you're talking about this. And we would like, as you already know, to have some regular interaction, more than once a year, with the council. And we like the idea of council liaisons. So that's the first thing. Second thing, facility use. Thank you for asking us to comment on that, and we will absolutely be doing that. Was a topic of great discussion in the spring, but at that point, didn't, we didn't, getting back to committees, we didn't, and their role, we didn't quite know how to approach it with you, so this is, this is good for us. And then third, I noticed you'll be discussing, in a working session, you'll be discussing the role of recreation services. Just to remind you, the committee, in a couple of its annual reports, has talked about what we see as the role and mission. And just to, not having it in front of me, but just to paraphrase, we see a diverse community in Tacoma, and we want to reach as many segments of that community with recreation services as possible. That doesn't mean we can afford to be everything to everybody, but to really look at, to go beyond traditional, second point, go beyond traditional recreation programs to what have traditionally been hard to serve populations, for example, teens in the community. Third, we have a strong interest in staff and volunteer partnerships to serve all aspects of the, to deliver these programs. So just to put that out on the table for you guys to start with, talking tonight about that topic. Thank you.
Hi, Kaye Daniels Cullen, Sherman Avenue, and president of SS Carroll Neighborhood Association. I think you have the little paper in front of you that I prepared. Four special comments. I know that everyone in the city of Tacoma Park's government goes over and above the call of duty, but I'd really like to commend Colleen Clay for her focus and commitment in Beer S. Folk, a Tacoma Park Folk Festival fundraiser. It not only raised funds for a very special Tacoma Park festival, but it also put three of our pubs on the map. And whilst it had a glitch or two, it was quite fun and showed another part of our fair city. I'm sorry that there was only room for 100 people. It was really, really very, very, very special and quite a bit of fun. I commend the city and the Independence Day Committee for a really great July 4th celebration, and for the excellent fireworks that none of you all got to see, because you were here on July the 5th.
We didn't see them.
Did you all go out and see them?
Yes.
All right, great. And you could just see, like, just the tippy tops of them from Grand. The parade was really wonderful, as were the events during the rest of the day, including the Recreation Committee and department-sponsored Whiffle Ball Tournament, capably run by our own Howard Combe. I invite anyone in the city who had any complaint about the day's events to jump on the Independence Day Committee and experience a real roller coaster ride on July the 4th. A tip of one of my many hats to Terry Siemens for his continued support of the Independence Day Committee. Teen Garden Report. Now, you all have in front of you something that is a report from the teen garden. Those, for the most part, are...
Wait, we're already getting the police chief get a tomato.
No, tomatoes aren't ready yet. Next week, tomatoes. This week are peppers. Tomatoes aren't quite done yet. Those are sweet banana peppers. A couple of you have little green peppers. But, the garden is growing with great tenacity, and has produced some very excellent veggies and herbs that have been given away to almost anyone who passes its way, including the police department, some of the city staff, and teens who have helped plant seeds, and used its yield in their cooking experiments. Our gardeners are looking forward, listen to this, looking forward to negotiating with Pepco for a larger spot on their land for next year, and expanding our horizons. We're going for it.
Excuse me, if I may interrupt. Can I make a special request, please? When those tomatoes are ripe, would you please not hand them out in the gallery? Thank you.
No, no, I will not, would never do that. They're too special. They're very special tomatoes. There are, if you go down there, there's some little cherry tomatoes that look orange. If you just pop one off and eat it, it is like eating candy. It is so good. They are all, they're all done. Now, my quick, quickly, my editorial comment, and it's also about the committees. The continuation of the city-sponsored committees offers the citizenry the opportunity to give back to our community in a way that works. I urge you to continue most of these committees, and actually have them report back to the council, once, if not twice, per year. The council knows, so the council knows what's going on and what they're about. I know that you're a busy group, but I request that each of you, the mayor and city council members, take on a committee of their choice with which to be a liaison. The city would be hard-pressed to find participants in the nonofficial committees, like the ones mentioned in items number one and two, if there weren't city-sponsored committees for participants to get their feet wet in. I thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I thank you for everything that you do for the city. And I'm sorry I ran over a tad.
And thank you. And you said these are bananas and sweet...
Sweet banana peppers.
They're not hot.
They're not hot. I have lots of, I have muy caliente out there. There's a bunch of muy caliente.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that if I bit into this, it would be like, it would be like interacting with the citizens of Tacoma Park. They're sweet, but not hot.
Well, it's going to be, it's going to be green peppery tasting. Green pepper, it's pretty good. The other thing to go out there is go grab a green bean. I should have brought everybody a green bean and just eat it raw, because they are like eating candy. Perfect. It's a treat to be able to go out and pick something and then go cook it, so. And also, to give it away to somebody else. It's great fun.
Anybody else? Okay, council comments. Councilmember Snapper.
I got there first. Can't believe it. Thank you, Mayor. I just have one quick note. I want to remind the residents of Ward 5 that the Flower Avenue project is going to start up. There are going to be planning meetings with the residents, there'll be a series of them. Please watch for the notices of when those meetings will occur. I hope people will participate actively in both on the Tacoma Park side, and for those handful who are watching from the Silver Springs side, like to get their input as well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Clay.
It has been noted that there was no flea market at the corner of Jackson and Ethan Allen this weekend, so thank you very much for that. That's a significant improvement. I just wanted to put it out on the radar, too, about the 410 meetings. I know that there's been kind of a slight stall, but around vacation schedules and everything coming up, I'd still like to see if we could get rolling on that. I think that there's some relief around the areas that have been repaved in the central area, but the part of the roadway that's between the Junction and Jackson is still pretty bad, and that's one of the areas where people complained about the significant impact of the shaking on the foundations of their homes. So we've, I think, provided some relief to some folks, but the shaking is a significant issue. And I think that that's also true in the section between Elm Avenue and New Hampshire Avenue. And I had an interesting conversation with someone along there who said that they've been watching how the potholes get patched, and they have noted that pothole patches can actually change the way their house shakes, and they think that it's related to this issue of the depth of the concrete and the roadbed, which I thought was kind of interesting, because they watched them do the patches, and they don't, they don't pour all that concrete in. We had that big conversation about the 12 inches of concrete along Ethan Allen, and how that affects the impact of the shaking. And so I thought that was somewhat interesting. Another thing that I thought was interesting is that the pothole they got patched that makes their house shake is actually five houses away from their, five houses away from where their house is at. So it's a significant issue around the permitting, and it affects a broad array of people when it doesn't happen quite right. There's also a bizarre patch on Boyd Avenue, close to Carroll Avenue, and it's along, I think it's Boyd, it's not Lincoln, it's not on your street, is it? The big ball patch? There's a big ball of asphalt, where they're, I think it's the gas company put yellow markers all along, and we decided that that's because they're looking for gas leaks, and so their boring holes looking for gas leaks. Well, so then I was driving along, and somebody has cut some sort of a hole and patched it, and I swear, the asphalt, the first day it was this high, and it's just made this kind of big ugly ball on it. I have no idea if that was the gas company or something else that happened. I want to note that we have folks here from the Forest Park, Belford area, to make comments about the Come to Africa resolution, and I'm happy that they have come back this week. The council members would note that there is a letter from the folks who came last week, and not only did they write a letter and gather agreement on it, but they also took the time to get all the signatures on it. I think that that should be taken as an indication of how important this issue is to this, to these folks. And the last thing, just after councilmember Snapper made the comments about Flower and Carroll, is that we'll make sure that the people who are on the Long Branch side of Flower Avenue get included in the planning meetings for the changeover for Carroll Avenue, because that street was state highway up until it hit Flower and Carroll eastbound, and as you're well aware, over the years, that that has created some significant challenges later down the roadway, because the non-state highway part of it connects between Carroll Avenue and Sligo Creek Parkway on a roadway that does some funny dog legs, and is 18 feet wide at one point, which has caused some problems. And I think that there is an opportunity now where we're doing all of this work with state highway, and we're looking at what's happening with Flower Avenue to actually help address the problems that are there, which in part is around the traffic that comes all the way through. It'd be nice to be able to encourage people not to make that throughway. But the other side of that is that those neighbors have long complained about the intersection at Flower and Carroll, and there's the drainage issues, and there's the lighting issues, and there's the alignment issues, and the sidewalk issues, and the pavement structure issues, and the retaining wall issues. And I could probably think of a few more if I had more time, but I'm going to, I'm going to leave it at that, and just ask that we make a concerted effort to include the Long Branch Sligo Neighborhood Association, and more directly, the neighbors, either through our newsletter process, or in the same way that we engage the other, have folks in Ward 5 and folks right on the border.
And if I can just get a clarification on your request on the 410 meetings, were you referring to ones that are on the council agenda, neighborhood meetings, or meetings with, between staff and state highway?
The meetings with the state highway folks.
With staff?
With staff, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Councilmember Robinson.
I'm going to follow up on the 410. Councilmember Clay, you were talking about the section between Jackson and the Junction, and I agree that concrete under, that the concrete underneath that needs to be evaluated, if not replaced or patched. And I wonder if we have had an estimate for that work. I remember a couple of estimates about work on 410 a couple of years ago. There was one estimate when we were trying, when we were grappling with how we were going to get it fixed, before the whole state highway ownership issue came up, and there was, I don't remember the actual number, but it was for the entire length of 410, and where we are now is that a decent portion has been patched with the concrete underneath.
It was a ballpark at 125 to 150.
A ballpark at 125 to 150.
Right.
That's what I'm talking about, is Ethan Allen. Just Ethan Allen.
The Junction, from the Junction.
But I'm now talking about between the Junction and Jackson, because that part has not been patched. And likewise, there's a section between Elm and New Hampshire, which has not been, not patched is the wrong word, not been rebuilt.
Yeah, it's at about, it's from about the mid-400 block down to New Hampshire.
And I, and I understand that our budget discussions are somewhat in limbo, but I think it would be valuable for us to be able to know what we're, what we would be up against if we decided we wanted to do a thorough and complete rebuild of 410 between, in those two sections. I don't know if that's what you were asking for, Colleen, but I think that, I want, I want to make sure that we know that, that we have those numbers, regardless of which way the negotiations with state goes and so forth.
I agree.
And the other roadway issue that I have is that on Fifth, in Ward 3, between Eastern and Orchard, there's a very large section of road that's, it looks like, I'm scared when I drive over it. It's bumpy, and I know it's had, it's had one big patch. So if you could ask for, from Darryl, what plans are, or what the state of it is. Thank you.
That's all. Councilmember Schultz.
There seems to be emerging, in my Board, Ward 6, growing concern among a number of residents about people who don't live in New Hampshire Gardens, which is to say the west side of New Hampshire Avenue, parking overnight or for extended periods, who are tying up parking spaces on a number of residential streets, including, some of these parked cars are cabs. And while these are public streets, and we all know that everybody has a right to park on any street at any time they choose, because they're public streets, the concern is, is that they're not only inconveniencing the people who live along these streets, but they're leaving behind a lot of trash and detritus, such as needles... they're leaving behind a lot of trash and detritus, such as needles, condoms, I'm told, you know, oil cans, body parts, you know, parts of car parts. Yeah, I was sort of building up to that. Strike that from the minutes. Mrs. Carpenter. Car parts, and all kinds of stuff that are just not really appropriate, as somebody pointed out, for families with lots of little kids running around. I think the residents seem to think that the problem is emerging from the New Hampshire Towers, where Tenacity apparently, and a lot of this is just second and third-hand information, so it's not reliable, has imposed parking fees, or whether that's that, or there's an inadequacy of parking for the tenants who live in New Hampshire Towers, or whatever, there's just an inundation of cars that's been getting increasingly larger, and it's leading some of the residents to think that maybe we need to have a meeting with the people that manage the New Hampshire Towers, the Tenacity organization, or perhaps we need to be talking to the city, residents need to be talking to the city about instituting a permanent parking zone, and I'm not advocating any course of direction right now. The reason I simply mention this is to give the city a heads-up, and also to ask whether staff in the Housing Department, who are familiar with the managers who run the New Hampshire Towers, if they have any information that would help us figure out what's causing this problem, and so that we can kind of figure out what to do about it. And the community, I think, is probably going the way it's heading, organizing itself in a way, maybe there'll be a meeting where we can invite somebody from the city to come out and help us understand the problem and what, if anything, can legally be done to sort of curb this trend. That's all I really wanted to say on that. I realize it's very iffy at the present time, but I think it's a good idea for you, at least to be aware that this is an emerging problem.
Councilmember Wright.
Thank you. Three quick local issues. First is, in Jackie Park, there's been ongoing graffiti of the shed there, and the city's exploring two options. One is to paint the shed that's brick, and one of the issues is they keep putting graffiti on it, and it's particularly difficult to scrub the graffiti off on the brick and masonry, so they're contemplating painting it a brick color with a clear coat over it that would more easily be able to be cleaned, and the other option is planting some shrubbery around the shed to prevent people from easily having access to write on the wall. So those are the two options being explored, and I would just encourage the residents of North Tacoma to be patient as we try and work that out. The second is, just as we're thinking about the conversations with state highway, totally supportive of all the things that councilmember Clay and Robinson mentioned, but also that there are other parts of 410 and the state highway that run through the city and are also in dispute about who owns them, including portions of Philadelphia from Carroll to Maple Avenue, which also are in need of repair, and we're cited earlier of that need, not as dire as the situation that councilmember Clay cited, but just as we're going to have those conversations going forward, particularly potentially while we're in recess, would really hope that those items are included, and also that even though we are in recess of those critical items, that the staff would be able to reach out to the council members, obviously by email. The third local issue is that Washington Gas will start its projects on August 8 in the Penn neighborhood, beginning on my very own street, Maple Avenue. I'll be posting more information about that to the Penn listserv, but there also is a portion of the city website specifically targeted to this project with updated information. Two items that are not necessarily solely local, but I think have local implications that we should weigh in on as a council, and I would be interested in drafting resolutions about both these items for us to consider when we're back from our recess. The first is marriage equality. There's an opportunity now to pressure the governor to really be proactive on marriage equality, so that everyone in Maryland can get married if they decide to. Really, to me, a personal and civil rights issue, and the governor last year agreed to sign the bill if it came before him, but he didn't actively put a lot of pressure on or campaigned for that bill, so I think there's an opportunity now to re-alert the governor that many people care about this issue, and Tacoma Park should be one of them. And the second is a resolution asking the governor to terminate their memorandum of agreement with ICE around the Secure Communities Initiative, which is a flawed federal policy. There's also, there have already been states, Massachusetts, Illinois, New York, that have taken a strong leadership position on this, and it's really a public safety issue. The idea is that this law is supposed to, or this initiative is supposed to make us safer, and in fact, it doesn't. It makes particularly immigrants less likely to contact the police, and we need to reverse that, do away with that, and conduct our local dealings around public safety in the way that Tacoma Park has over the past years.
And I've just got a couple of quick items. There've been a couple of comments about National Night Out, and I just want to make sure we say when it is. You'll be doing that? Okay, the chief will be covering that. On the, this, the people have been putting together for state highway, another one is the 7500 block of Carroll Avenue, which is where the WSSC work took place recently that went very well with the temporary, you know, all of the replacement of line and temporary patching, but that section of the road is now getting very uneven, and it's not an easy section to traverse.
You're being too kind.
It's a lousy shit.
It's moving into the Ethan Allen.
Yeah, it is, it is. So if we can find out what their schedule is and what their intent is, whether they're going to do curb-to-curb, or how they're going to deal with that, that would be very helpful. I would wish that it could be dealt with in the same way that Ethan Allen was. And also, I just wanted to note, a number of people tonight, public comment in talking about committees, talked about being in favor of council liaisons. That's one of the subjects that we're going to take up with the committee discussion, and I think based on the number of people who commented on it tonight, I think I would like to make that one of the items that we do cover tonight. So for all those people who had comments on that, even if you don't stay around for the conversation, you might want to go back to the video on the internet and listen to that portion of it, because my sense was in listening that people were unanimously in favor of that. I think there are a number of reasons why it may not be a good idea, and I think that would be helpful to have people hear that part of the discussion. So I just want to point that out, that we will do that part tonight. I don't see any other council comments, so we'll move to city managers' comments.
Just a few items this evening. Last week, councilmember Clay had asked staff to kind of clarify what the situation was regarding the lot at Ethan Allen and Jackson. We did send some information out to the council via email, and I just wanted to check councilmember Clay, whether you had everything you needed on that issue.
Yes, that was all good news, and thank you for going through the process. I understand that the approach of the lot owner and the users changed and required some more legal support to make sure that we had all, there was new information, I had all of our Ts crossed and Is dotted and all of that, and I appreciate that and was able to communicate that to the residents who were concerned, which I think made a big difference in the understanding of why the shift happened. And then having the outcome be that there was no flea market this weekend was also incredibly helpful.
Much of the thanks goes to the city clerk, Jesse Carpenter, who did the yeoman's share of the research.
Thank you.
In regard to 410, the deputy city manager and I talked this morning about that. Obviously, there's been transition at the head of S.H.A. We talked about contacting, the staff point contact at S.H.A. and trying to see if we can get a meeting set up by the end of August, so we'll keep you posted on that.
Okay.
Councilmember Wright had mentioned about the work being done by Washington Gas in his ward. The Public Works Director and the City Engineer did have a pre-construction meeting with Washington Gas this morning. She sent me a fairly detailed email, kind of highlighting the nature of the conversation at that meeting, and a copy of that email that she sent me was placed at the dais this evening. So if you have any questions about that, just let us know. And kind of on the fun side, the contractor for Public Works sent me some aerial photographs of the construction site. I'll just pass these around if you haven't been over there recently. Took the opportunity on Friday to walk the site with Darrell. Tremendous amount of work being done. We're still looking at probably a mid-September completion date, but I thought the aerial photographs might be something you'd enjoy seeing. And then the chief actually asked if he could have a few minutes to talk about National Night Out and a few crime-related issues.
Welcome, Chief.
Good evening. National Night Out, I want to invite the entire community, the council, the mayor, city manager. It will be August 2nd from 6:00 to 9:00. We've changed the location this year. We've made it more central in the city, because it's for all the city, not just one part of the city or one ward. It's for everyone, and we really want to encourage parents to bring their kids and stop by, meet members of our department, park police, and the various partners we have in law enforcement in the community. It'll be from 6:00 to 9:00 P.M. There'll be refreshments, there'll be giveaways, and it'll be a good time for all. So we'll be putting updates to the community through the next couple of weeks, reminding everybody about it, but it's August 2nd from 6:00 to 9:00.
Chief, did you say where it was going to be?
Ponty Branch Elementary, so I'm sorry. 7510 Maple Avenue. I'll be in the parking lot in the front and along the sides there. So we welcome everyone to come out, Ponty Branch Elementary, 7510 Maple Avenue. Saturday, there was a rather brazen, strong-arm robbery in the parking lot of the Tacoma Co-op. Fortunately, one of our residents observed the crime occur, followed the suspect in his vehicle, got a tag number for us. As a result of the tag number, our officers were able to get a listing, do a background, get a photo. Within two hours, we were able to identify the suspect. We had a warrant and a search warrant that night for the suspect. We've been for the last 48 hours looking for him, and the pressure came in, and the suspect surrendered to us this afternoon and is now in custody. So we were able to get this case closed very quickly, because obviously alarmed all those that were there, Saturday, in broad daylight for robbery like that to occur. I might add, one of the problems we continue to run into in the criminal justice system, this subject's well-known to us in Tacoma Park. We've arrested him before and had an extensive criminal history, and we hope to work with the state attorney to this time put the suspect away for a long time, so they won't have more victims. But I want to thank the citizen, I'm not going to say their name, obviously, but this is what I talk about all the time and have for the last five years, citizens getting involved, getting information, making phone calls, give us a tag number. All it took was a tag number, and I'm really proud of our patrol officers who worked at Saturday and turned it over to detectives this morning, but we've been working on it for like 48 straight hours to get this suspect off the street, but the cooperation of the community pays off, and it always does for us when we make a good arrest. It just takes one citizen to get involved, so we ask the citizen to continue, and I thank that resident of our community who went the extra mile in getting that tag number. There was another arrest over the weekend. Last night, in the middle of the night, one of our officers on routine patrol, as you know, we've had 24 bikes stolen the last two months here in Tacoma Park, and last night on routine patrol, we observed four individuals on bikes, with the second individual riding a bike and bringing a bike along as he rode down Hodges Lane. Our officer attempted to stop all four subjects. We were successful in getting the individual with the two bikes. Three others went into the District of Columbia, but we did make an arrest. We believe the suspect and his friends are responsible for majority of our bike thefts. We found on his person a set of bolt cutters. So what I'm telling people that may lock their bikes out front to a bar or something thinking it's safe, I wouldn't do that right now. I try to lock it in a secure part of your home. We have identified, or are in the process of identifying, the other three suspects. I hope to have them in custody shortly. They're all juveniles, but once again, we urge this community to lock up their bikes out of public view. We believe these subjects, and from the statement we got from the one individual. Fortunately, he is cooperating at the request of his parents, which will help us in trying to shut down some of these other bike cases that we have. But once again, it's a good arrest, and just to remind the community, we're at there 24/7, and at 3:40 in the morning, you never know who might come up your street, so if you do see suspicious stuff, call us, let us know. It does pay off. Saturday couldn't have had more cooperation. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Chief. That's it? Okay. Then we will move to our first item on the agenda, which is the Board of Elections update. Welcome.
Good evening. Is this good?
Yep.
Okay, I can't hear myself. I'm Anne Sargent, Chair of the Tacoma Park Board of Elections, and this is a briefing to just quickly run through what we've been up to lately, and I'm not going to say too much more than is on the handout, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about it. First thing on the list here is the ScanTegity voting system. This is a system we used last year, which allows people to write down some codes and then go home and check to see that their vote was counted as cast from their computer, and we recommend that we go with that system again, this for the 2011 election. They are in the process of making some tweaks, they're working with us to make it work even more smoothly for people and be a little bit more. It was a problem for, the typical person for which it was difficult was the mom with a baby on the hip and a bag on the shoulder, and they had to take one hand and sort of want to use two to put the ballot through the scanner, and we're working on greatly improving that situation. We did some other tweaks as well. So the ScanTegity team is filing an application for, an application to create a foundation that would have 501(c)(3) status. That's just an FYI, it doesn't have too much to do with us. The George Washington University part of the team has developed this really cool accessibility interface that allows blind or sight impaired voters to vote on their own without any help from a companion or anybody from the Board of Elections. We tested this, I think it was last month, with seniors right here in the building, and it was well-received by the seniors. There was one blind person who tested it, and she was thrilled. And we, the Board of Elections folks that were there, that were available that day, came and also gave it a try ourselves. I used it myself, and I tried to keep my eyes closed, so it would be a realistic test. And it's kind of like a phone mail system where you press one for this and two for that, so it reads the candidate's name and says to select so-and-so, press one, to select so-and-so, press two, and it also has a recording option if somebody wants to do a verbal write-in. And then when the votes are counted, the computer will just play the recording for us, so we can tell what the person voted for. Those folks, too, would also be able to check their votes online, just like regular cited voters using a regular ballot, and the system prints a paper ballot that can then be scanned, so the ballots will look the same or almost the same as regular voted ballots. The George Washington University part of the team is also working with Dr. Noel Runyon, who's a voting accessibility specialist and computer engineer. He himself is blind, and he's done some consulting for, I forget if it's the State of California or the City of San Francisco, I think it's the State of California. Oh, thank you, April. So he's got plenty of experience with accessibility in elections, and he's also offering his services pro bono, so no cost to us or to the university. The ScanTegity system, our team has also developed a system that allows absentee voters to verify their votes online, and that means they would come and/or request a ballot by mail and send it back in, then their ballot would be scanned with everybody else's, they'd be able to capture the codes and check their, verify their vote online. There could be a system, well, there's a system in development called Remotegity, after ScanTegity, that would allow people to actually vote online, but that's not quite ready for primetime yet, and it's the concept of voting online, some people think, well, it's not really voting online, but to some of us, it looks like it's voting online. So to be considered in the future, but that's definitely not ready for primetime right now, just to know it's a possibility. We're exploring whether to offer early voting as an in-person absentee setup beyond what was provided last year, so somebody would be able to come in early, and we would have either, if Jesse or maybe Irma were available to staff that, that would be a possibility, or perhaps people on the Board of Elections would be able to volunteer. We haven't, we're just exploring it, no conclusions yet. that have to happen, and the short answer is we don't have time to make them all happen in the amount of time that's available. There haven't been a lot of people who've stepped up to participate on a committee that would do redistricting or a task force, and that's, one could conclude that there's not a great hue and cry in the community that we need to redistrict after the latest census. So we can consider it for the future, but we're not recommending it right now. ScanTegity and the city applied for and run a $25,000 grant from the Election Assistance Commission, and this is for voting system audit testing and documentation. The grant will be awarded to the city and come through the city, but ScanTegity will do the work on that. So it's very little work on the part of the city. It's a two-year grant, and they expect to finish it this year. They're really focused on what they're planning to do. Current activities include preparations for the 2011 election. We're making our final decisions on election system particulars, election day logistics. We've looked at the rooms and started the discussion about which rooms are going to work best for the voting process, and we're also, we just started working on updating the election judge manual. And I have saved the best for last, that's staffing. Current members, and you have this, I think, on your blue sheet as well, but current members include me, and Jim Roberts, and April Kissel, who are in the room, Barry Freeman, she used to have a different last name, that's my hesitation there, Bill Lawson, and Jose Zambrana. And I have to say, I love working with this group of people. We have lots of different people with lots of different expertise, everything from, Jim is a political science professor at Towson, Barry works for a nonprofit that does election oversight in places like Africa where she is right now, and we have scientists, we have teachers, we have computer people, we have a lot of different perspectives and viewpoints, and it is great working on this, this board right now, and I'm grateful to be working with everybody. And we have outstanding support from Jesse, who I am really happy got an award for being City Clerk of the Year. That was just, that was very cool. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have, I wanted to get a clarification on that.
Okay.
Voting, I wasn't sure whether you were saying that we might do that this election or not.
We are exploring whether to operate, and we haven't decided yet.
So that's up in the air, but it's, there's a possibility that there might be?
Yes, it's, it's under discussion at the moment. We haven't voted yes or no. Not everybody, there's a spectrum of opinions on the board about that right now.
Okay. Other questions? Let's move right.
First, Anne, I want to say thank you to you. I know you've been a wonderful diligent Board of Elections person for us, and also have manned an election site for the county, for the larger county in.
Piney Branch Elementary, that's me.
Piney Branch Elementary. So I appreciate all of your diligence and commitment to a fair voting process. I just had a question related to the redistricting.
Uh huh.
And this might be for the city clerk also. What are the requirements around, either by city charter, state law, what have you about the redistricting, and when we're required to do that, if we are, or is it just a convenient thing to do connected to the census? What are the rules?
Right. I haven't found anything that says it has to be done now, and in fact, 10 years ago, it was delayed partially because the census results were problematic 10 years ago, and they are again this time. And so it was delayed until prior to the 2003 election. It was not done in 2001. At that time, the redistricting task force had met and determined that it couldn't be completed in time for the election. When we talked about it in terms of what it would mean, because obviously what the redistricting process comes up with will affect what the election itself, and what occurred to us is that not only does the city have to be satisfied, but we have to send results to the Board of Elections so that they could redo the voter rolls. And that, we have to assume adds more time as well. But the bottom line is, I can't find anything that says it has to be done now. It has to be done, but there's not a, I haven't found anything that says it must be done this year.
Is there anything that says it has to be done by any date specific at all?
No, not in our charter or code. It just says that the rebalancing needs to be done.
And have we gotten an opinion from the city attorney on this, or it might relate to state law or federal law?
No, I, I can't say with certainty. I feel like I have discussed it, but I can't, I can't guarantee that. I'll double-check tomorrow.
I know we're not voting on, I'd be okay with delaying the redistricting as long as it weren't in violation of, and any rule of law.
Yeah.
Councilmember Clay.
I'd be interested in seeing the data that would be made available. I realize that we feel like we've been undercounted, and we're saying that we don't think there's much of a difference. I'd be more comfortable with that if I could actually look at the information.
That should be available.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council?
Whoops, I pushed the wrong guy.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Am I correct in saying that, that when it comes to the redistricting for congressional elections, you know, the boundaries for our state assembly members and for our, the representatives we send to Congress, that those do get done this fall? I think the state assembly is meeting in special session to, to draft the new boundaries. Am I, is anybody?
That's the special session in October.
Yeah, but they're able to do that even though the census data is still not accurate to everybody's satisfaction. I, this really is kind of a rhetorical question because obviously, you know, I'm only here to be worrying about Tacoma Park and our redistricting, but I, it's funny to me to think that at the state level, somebody knows how to figure out how to do the redistricting, but at the, at the municipal level, and if it's Tacoma Park, it's probably a whole lot of municipalities just like us who are having to take their time to get it all done correctly.
If I might, I think that there's a couple issues. There are a number of blocks that have been undercounted, as I've shared the information of some questionable blocks.
Mm-hmm.
It's something that we may want to file an appeal with the Census Bureau on. But when it comes to Tacoma Park, you know, the goal is to have districts that are, wards that are very similar to each other in terms of population size, and then there's some other criteria where they try to look at community organization boundaries and natural boundaries, things that make sense when you're coming up with what the ward line should be. And if there's, with such small districts, 3,000 people or so, you know, a block here there makes a lot of difference, whereas at a state level, at a larger congressional district level, you've got some more, the numbers don't have to be so precise to come up with those kinds of things. And they also have laws that specify when it needs to be done, and they do the best they can with the data that they have.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Ray, you have a comment?
Could I elaborate on that a little bit also, please?
Sure.
The other thing to keep in mind is that we would be doing this for a 2011 election, which is just a few months away, and that redistricting is done for the 2012 election. So they have.
Oh, that's right.
Anything we do affects, for instance, who's going to run for office here, and that's one of the big factors. There's, people have to file and so on and so forth. The other thing, and I do not want this to come out like a complaint, but we do it with volunteers, and they do it with paid people. So we do know how to do it here, though.
You're saying you could use a raise?
Well, free is free, right?
Just kidding.
No, my point was actually that, to that point exactly, is that it's not actually the Board of Elections that does the redistricting. We have a redistricting task force. I personally feel that as councilmembers, we haven't done our duty to recruit the members to be on that task force. So it's not even like if we wanted to start tomorrow and could charge a task force tomorrow, I don't think we have enough members, if I'm correct.
Correct.
Clerk, to, to, to staff with volunteers, the task force. So I think we could wag our fingers and say we want it done tomorrow, but we haven't done the work to give the volunteers to the city clerk to do the work.
And Jim Roberts actually was on the last redistricting task force, so if one were to be assembled, it would be in able hands. Still, there are just so many hours in the day.
And as was pointed out, our timeframe would be much more compressed.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you all very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate all your hard work.
My pleasure. It's more fun than my paying job.
And it's been nice to have a Board of Elections which didn't exist until, what, about four years ago? Three years ago?
Three or four.
Three or four, yeah.
Yeah. It was, it was always, it's, it's much easier now to not have by default the city council making, having some of the discussions and making some of the decisions that you all can do. It's much easier to have you doing it and not us doing it where it affects our own elections. Okay, we'll move to special session items, and the first one is a resolution commenting on applicants' request to the Board of License Commissioners to expand a restaurant, Come to Africa at 8068 34 Hampshire Avenue. And we had the last two meetings, we heard about this, we had a public hearing last week, we took comments there, and then we directed the deputy city manager to put together a resolution, and she has done so.
That's what I was going to say.
Oh, well.
I'll turn it over to you. I move the order.
Move the resolution.
Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. Comments?
Public first.
Us first, then public. Councilmember Clay.
I want to thank everyone for taking the time with this issue, especially the residents who have come out now for both of these meetings and who've taken the time to make really meaningful comments about the impact of the Come to Africa business on the surrounding community. I also appreciate the effort that the Come to Africa owner has, has made to address the issues as they've been identified, and I think it's been noted by several councilmembers that we would continue to support a quality restaurant in that site, and we would look forward to the business transitioning into a restaurant and not so much a nightclub. You all have the letter that, from the, from the residents, and it's there at your dais, and I think it really speaks for itself.
Councilmember Robinson.
I would just, for us and in context, note that our process here to come to a decision or an opinion is, has been important, and we got to a certain point with the state last session regarding this very same issue of, we want to have the ability to weigh in on liquor licenses. And so I, I think that, and we kind of took a hard stand as regards our efforts to, to increase the kinds of liquor licenses we can have in the city. And where it founded at the state was that we wanted to have this kind of, the kind of power to, when the license was being weighed. So I'm glad that we've given this so much thought and that we're coming to a conclusion, and I hope that it will have weight when it gets to the Board of Licenses. And I hope that when we, when it comes back at the state, that we continue to insist on having this kind of say, because I think it's very valuable.
I'm totally a supporter of the resolution. I just want to be very clear and make sure that there's four other councilmembers that would support the recommendation that city staff work with the licensing board so that we always know when a license is being applied for, so that there aren't situations where, where after the fact, I think in this case, this didn't come before us originally, we weren't asked for an opinion on it, and maybe we would have a different perspective or conversation with the owners if we had had the original conversation about what would work there.
Totally.
So are there four other councilmembers that would agree with that perspective that we asked the city staff? Thank you.
Let me just say that I think the, everybody's understanding of the usual process is that these questions do get brought to the attention of staff by the county, and the usual process is that the staff checks with the council member about whether there are concerns. I don't know what happened in this case, but that has been the process, and that's what should have occurred here. Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I would certainly support this resolution. I would also like the council to keep in mind this situation, because I think for this particular restaurant or establishment, there was, you know, a group of neighborhood residents who were affected by the business, who were able to come out and voice their opinion and to a great extent, let the council know what was really going on. But I would remind you that the Tijuana Mexican Restaurant came here before this council several years ago when they were applying for a liquor license, and they again, you know, described themselves as being a restaurant, but that establishment also stays open far beyond normal restaurant hours. And so I think that that should be a consideration that this council makes for all such licenses, that they're, if they're saying that they're going to be a restaurant, then we should be considering them as a restaurant and putting restrictions on it that are reasonable for restaurants. But if they're trying to be a nightclub, that they should be upfront so that we are considering the type of business they're going to be in, whether or not we want those in the city limits. Thank you.
Evan? Councilmember Schultz.
I want us to be, want to be clear with regard to what we're doing here as, to make sure that the wrong message or take isn't occurring. I'm saying that the members of the city council individually, certainly most of us, took a great deal of care in trying to understand what the issues were surrounding this establishment. And some of us visited the establishment, met with the owner, spoke with the owner, were able to, you know, examine the place, front and back, and inside and outside, and then we were also able to hear the various testimony from residents and get information from the police department with regard to the police department's experience. There's a lot of data that came together before I made up my mind about how to, how to cast a vote on this resolution, but that in no ways should be taken or imply that we are, have some disregard for small business restaurants or businesses that serve alcohol in Tacoma Park. I think each case has to stand on, these sorts of situations has to stand on its individual merit, and because frankly, I for one, and I think I can speak for all of us, are very supportive, we're trying to figure out how we can support small businesses, the ones that are here, and to encourage small businesses to come into Tacoma Park to maintain the diversity of our rich commercial environment. And so this, this resolution should in no way reflect, I hope, upon the, our philosophy about supporting small businesses in this town, and I just want to make sure that that's understood.
And I'll just carry on from your comments, Councilmember Schultz. I think that when this item first came up to the council, there was some understanding about what the. about what the business owner was trying to do in trying to address some of the concerns that had been addressed, that had been presented, and understanding that he was trying to improve the situation and expand in a way that addressed a lot of the issues that people, that the neighbors were concerned about. So I think there was a willingness to understand that there might be ways in which the city could help the business owner end up with a business that fit well in that location. But throughout that discussion at the, discussion two weeks ago, it was always very clear that the council wanted to hear from the neighbors before we made any decision. That public hearing last week was very helpful in understanding that even though the business owner called it a restaurant, it's what appeared to us to be a nightclub, and the set of issues are very different with a nightclub rather than a restaurant backing up to residential neighbors. And it was also instructive to see how the adjacent neighbors were described as being the commercial properties and woods, as opposed to the commercial properties and the neighbors who lived in those woods. And so I think it was, it became very clear to the council that we needed to consider and vote on this resolution, so that we can let the Montgomery County Liquor Control Board know our opinion, remembering that they take our opinion into consideration, but we are not the final arbiter in this. And to Councilmember, Councilmember Robinson's remarks about what we were trying to do with the discussions and getting state law changed last session for allowing, having, having a more formal way for us to have our voice as part of the process for applications for liquor licenses, we were trying to do that in the context of off-sale licenses which are currently not in place in Tacoma Park, and that's where our ability to have a formal voice and to be able to say no, and if it doesn't go any farther, met with some opposition at the state, but also had a lot of support from the Montgomery County delegation and from the county. So I think there's a recognition on the part of the county that our input is valuable and can be a more formal part of the process, and that's one of the things that we have to try and figure out this year as we go back to the state legislature to try and figure out the best way to get that implemented in that way. And my feeling is that if we can get that through, say, in some way, that that would then open up the possibility that we could have a more formal approach in other licenses as well, considering that in this case, we do not have final approval. So I'm happy that we're doing this resolution, and I hope it all works out to everyone's satisfaction. And we'll take public comment. Mr. Lovelace in the back.
Hi, my name's Pat Lovelace again, your official P. delegate. Just want to tell you I agree with Terry Siemens on the liquor license, but I agree with him also that we should also be able to verify before we give the liquor license on the hours of opening, make sure they're not going to be awake and open around the clock, so that they'll, you know, to increase their sales, and also I'd like to know what they're going to do to participate in prevention of crime related to alcohol. You know, whether they're going to serve people who are drinking too much, whether they're going to allow people to, or encourage people to get in and out of their cars when they're drinking. You know, I'd like to know what they're going to do to, to participate in crime prevention of alcohol, if anything, and I think they should be encouraged. If they're going to have a liquor license, they should also participate in making our community a better place and a safer place around their establishments. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Hi, I took a look at the resolution. I did want to, first of all, say that I agree fully with Councilmember Schultz that the city, not just city, but the citizens really do want good small businesses here that serve the residents and that can attract people from outside, but that also do not detract from the residential neighborhood that we have here that we all moved to because that's what we love. And I support the resolution, and I'm not sure if I missed something of what Councilmember Siemens said. I'm wondering, do we have the authority in this resolution to set or recommend hours of operation that would be more in tune with a restaurant and less in tune with a nightclub, or if there's another avenue that the city council could take to set that, those guidelines elsewhere?
We can make recommendations, we cannot set them.
Will you?
Hmm? Nope. Other comments? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. We'll move to agenda item number three, which is a first-year new ordinance awarding a contract for solar power installation through a power purchasing agreement. We discussed this last week. Moved by Councilmember Snapper, seconded by Councilmember Clay. Public Works Director is here. Is there anything else that you want to tell us about this?
Nothing new, we had a pretty thorough discussion last Monday. There've been some email exchanges in response to Satyavan's comments. I don't know if any questions came up, but everything is the same as it was presented last week.
Maybe if you could just take a minute and explain the, the point about the...
The renewable energy credits?
Yes. The REX.
Okay. It's a very complex and complicated issue in some ways, though very simple in others. Basically, when you're generating renewable energy, be it through solar panels or wind turbines, the, if you can prove the calculation of those energy, of that amount of energy per kilowatt, and there are systems in place to do that, you can then get credentials for those renewable energy credits based per kilowatt. A credit equals a kilowatt. Those have a market value that is established based on the interest of others to purchase those credits to cover the power that they use. The city is a buyer of wind renewable energy credits and made that decision several years back because the power that we were able to get from the traditional provider did not include a renewable amount that was significant enough for our interests. So in addition to the regular energy that we use through Pepco, we purchase renewable energy credits through an outside vendor that generates those by wind turbines, and those credits get counted for us. We're the buyers of those credits to say we're supporting renewable energy through the purchase of those credits. Currently, our wind credits cost about .0017 cents per kilowatt. The value of renewable energy credits varies by its source. Solar power credits are a little more valuable than wind credits, hence they're a little more costly. So the issue came up about the solar panels that we're going to be putting on our roof. The proposal that we have in front of us through the power purchasing arrangement, we don't own those panels. The arrangement is that the vendor installs them, owns them, maintains them, and sells us the power. Therefore, we don't have access to those renewable energy credits the vendor does, and they will sell those renewable energy credits on the market in order to generate a financial package that makes it a bit interest to them to offer this proposal to the city, which allows us to buy energy at a lower cost than we, than we would through Pepco. The issue is, for some folks, that if, if you have solar panels on your roof, if you hang on to those solar renewable energy credits and don't allow them to be used in the marketplace, you then get the full credit, the whole value for that renewable energy. If you participate in the marketplace and sell those renewable energy credits, you're actually allowing somebody else to count their energy use as a renewable source, just like we do when we purchase wind credits. I don't know if that helps to clarify it or just muddy the waters more, but the market for renewable energy credits exists because the states have established renewable portfolio standards that require utilities to have a certain percentage of their power renewable, so they're a big buyer, but then so are others like ourselves and other nonprofit groups that want to promote and support renewable energy, so they assist the higher price of those costs by purchasing the credits from the generators.
And so currently, we own the solar panels that are existing on the roof.
Our ten, a little more than 10 kilowatt panels that were installed as part of the auditorium renovation, we haven't sold those solar renewable energy credits largely because it's a small amount and it's difficult to participate in the marketplace through our purchasing requirements, which require us to go out to bid and be competitive, and there's not a large marketplace out there that's interested in bidding on our credits. We did find a vendor. It wasn't clear to us whether we could find multiple vendors to compare prices, so we, you know, just have not moved forward on that. And currently, our renewable energy credits are staying with the city for the 10 KW system that we have installed now.
And so our current alignment of renewable energy credits is that we purchase 100% of the wind energy credits for the energy we use. Is that the gross, I'm assuming that that's for the energy that is basically pulled from the grid. How do those 10 KW panels enter into that equation?
They're not counted in what we currently do, but again, we're not doing kilowatt per kilowatt. The arrangement we have, and it's by a cooperative purchase through Montgomery County, we generally participate in an energy bid that's usually a one- or two-year, mostly two-year contract. So we have to say at the beginning what we're willing to buy, how many wind renewable energy credits we want to buy for the next two years, a year in advance. So we establish a threshold of what our general energy use is and say we want to purchase that amount.
So it's not a one-to-one, we can't necessarily say that we have, that the 100% is, assign those kilowatts and say it's exactly 100%, and it does or does not include the kilowatts generated by the panels?
Well, we know it's...
It's just hard to pin all that down.
Yeah, it doesn't include the kilowatts generated by our solar panels because they're not part of the mix. You know, what we based our numbers on is based on what we get through our Pepco billing, so all the energy use that we get through Pepco.
Therefore, the simplest thing to say is, what we, what we generate ourselves from the existing solar panels is renewable, and the wind energy credits that we buy cover theoretically 100% of the, of the rest of the power that we take off the grid. Therefore, what we have is 100% renewable, given those two sources.
Right, right. And that amount of electricity that we're purchasing includes not only building electricity use, but our streetlight electricity use, so it's, it's the whole package for us.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Wright.
So for the electricity that would be produced at the Public Works facility, we would, those REX would be sold, and we would continue to buy REX on the open market like we do for the Pepco generation currently performed, right?
We currently have a contract to purchase renewable energy credits through, what did I say, June 2012, whatever the contract period was that we agreed to two years ago. This fall or in the winter, Montgomery County will be going out to bid again, and we'll be asked again to establish what amount of renewable energy credits we want to purchase for a multi-year contract.
And we could include the, the energy generated by the solar panels on the Public Works facility?
Sure.
And this new deal, sorry, because there's someone that's building too, right?
Yeah, yes, there's, the, the power purchase agreement that you have before you tonight will include some 60 KW in the community center area and about 30 some KW in the Public Works facility.
And, and that would be much cheaper to do than to try and pay the solar installer for the REX that they're selling?
Yes, yes.
And then Satyavan proposed some other approaches, which I haven't fully wrapped my head around yet, but it didn't seem to me that we, that doing this, agreeing to do this tonight precluded pursuing those approaches in the, in the coming months, because it still involves kind of doing this deal as is and allowing them to sell their REXs, isn't that correct?
Sure, right, right. His encouragement, or point of view, as I understand it, was to encourage the city to maintain, you know, purchasing renewable energy credits to cover all of the city's electricity use, be it solar or traditionally generated, and also to establish a kind of, you know, assistance or, you know, provide our RFP or speak to, you know, other businesses or nonprofits in the city that may be interested in following this model or, you know, want some information about that, and we certainly could make that information available.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Clay.
Can I sell the renewable energy credits? Do they sell them every year, or do they do like they do with the low-income housing tax credit and sell the whole thing upfront?
Well, it depends, kind of on how big a player you are. If you're a really big player, you, you do it like stocks. You do it on the spot market. You wait till the market's high and you sell a certain quantity. You know, you can pull them up, you don't have to use them right away, you don't have to use them on a regular basis, as long as you have them certified as establishing. You can sell them in block, you can sell, spread it out. So it depends on how big of, how big a bag you have of renewable energy credits. For smaller entities that are in the market, usually you're required to send, sign a five-year contract. So you basically lock your sale of your renewable energy credits for a five-year period to whoever the buyer is, or whoever the broker is. Usually what it is, is a broker, you know, makes the arrangements with you, and then they sell it however they like, pooled together with other renewable energy credits.
Well, thank you for all the work that you've done educating everybody on the issue. I really appreciate it. I just want to say that I support the city continuing paying for the 100% renewable energy credits. It's Councilmember Wright who took the initiative to really push the city to go 100%, and we identified the money a couple of years ago, and I think that that's been a, I think that's been a really good decision. I don't think that I'm interested in paying renewable energy credits twice for the same energy that we spend, which I think is sort of inherent in one of the suggestions that's come forward, because I would rather see the city hold that money in-house and continue to support environmental initiatives within the city of Tacoma Park that I think ultimately will be more valuable to us, and, and I think in many ways just more valuable in the long run.
And I just want to follow up on that and make sure that I'm clear in how this works. The, if we, when we go to bidding, submitting what we're requesting as part of the Montgomery County bid process approximately a year from now, but what we'll set up leading up to that, because we, leaving aside for a moment the 10 KW that we currently have, the rest of the energy will be, the rest of our energy usage will either come from the solar panels on the roof, the roofs, or directly from the grid. And I'm assuming that it really all is from the grid because those solar panels feed into the grid and we pull from the grid?
I, I don't have the answer to that. I'll have to check with our solar folks to see. I don't know if that solar power is going, it couldn't be going through our meter, otherwise Pepco would charge us for it. So it has to be separate, how it ends up.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know.
And as we're, as we're looking at, okay, what wind energy credits or other energy credits do we need to buy, it would be to cover all of our energy usage, including the new panels that we don't have the energy credits for. Otherwise, if we didn't do it for the full amount, we would only be doing it. It would kind of be a, if we want to be 100% renewable, we have to do it for both. If, if you take the validity of this credit system as being a true barometer of true renewability. Is that correct?
Well, that's certainly one point of view widely held by folks that are advocating strong green policy.
Okay.
Can I, have I said that carefully?
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah. I just, it's like, you know, if you make certain assumptions, then yes, that's what you have to do. I just wanted to be sure that that was as clear as it could be at this point.
We, you know, as I've also mentioned before, we're, we're hoping to drastically change our electricity use through some upgrades that we're currently in development on, so it's a little bit of an unknown target. it's a little bit of an unknown target. And again, we make the best estimate we can of, you know, of a broad amount of kilowatts that we think we'll be using and we are locked in for, you know, a multi-year contract.
So even, even if we do all of this, it's, there's the potential that we would be buying fewer renewable energy credits the next go-around because we would require less power?
Yeah, or the one after that. I mean, for the chiller change out, it'll likely happen in 2012. The rooftop unit on the library should be happening in the next several, next month. So that improvement will be very quick, but the other will be a little while before we see.
And then we're left with no improvements in the streetlights?
Streetlights is a
That's a whole nother question.
...quote. The other thing we don't know is the public works facility's been offline for going on almost 10 months. So we don't know what that energy footprint's going to be. We've got projections from the architects and the engineers about what that is assumed to be. And we assume it to be reduced from what we had been using, just based on the nature of the facility itself. But it's a total unknown. We won't know until we start getting bills what our power use is.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, it's first-term ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Move to the next item, which is first-term ordinance, meaning that Tacoma Park Code increased certain fines and fees. I'm going to do that one.
I can explain this if you like. I think it's pretty straightforward. When the council adopted the fiscal year 2012 budget, a number of fees were increased. Several of those are established in the city code. So there needs to be a code amendment to make those increases, particularly the parking fines and fees are in the code in chapter 13.40. The utility permit fees, well, let me take a leap back. So we have the parking fines and fees, the dumpster fee, no, another step back. The permits and improvements fees, some of them are in the code and some of them were not. And, or rather, they were in, I'm sorry, I'm completely losing it here. In this, in a section of the code called chapter 8.32, licenses and permits, is where a number of these fees were laid out. And when I took a look at this, this chapter of the code, I realized that there was not really a way to update this licenses and permits chapter because much of it is obsolete. So it seemed like the way to go was to delete that chapter and incorporate the few fees that were on there and still valid directly into other chapters of the code. So we have the, in chapter 11.12, the permanent inspection fees, that was already in there. So we've just got the increase. The driveway apron fee cost was, was one of the fees in that chapter 8.32 that is obsolete. So that I've added directly into chapter 11.12.120, incorporated the fee directly in there. And that's on page three. And then on page four, we have the chapter 11.6, obstruction and protection of streets, where we have the dumpster fee. And that was also in that obsolete chapter. So I've included the fee directly in the section of the code that talks about construction dumpsters. Now, if I completely confuse you, please let me know. But so essentially, what this is doing is repealing a fairly obsolete chapter in the code, which is all listed elsewhere. You're not losing anything by repealing this chapter. And then the few things that you would have lost are being incorporated directly into relevant sections of the code.
And can you just say anything about the ones that are still going elsewhere in the code? What we've been generally doing over a period of time is removing fees from the code. And why we're still keeping some in if the argument was, no, we need to remove them so that the council doesn't have to change, you know, a $5 fee?
Right. Well, you haven't gone that far in that process. And I don't, I'm unaware that anyone's arguing that all fees should be removed from the code. You could go in that direction eventually. Some things are being removed, have been removed from the code to be dealt with administratively. It's true, the parking meters, for instance, the fee for a meter is in the code, but the fine, I mean, is in the administrative regulation, but the fine is in the code. And there's probably a reason for that, and that is it's a municipal infraction. I mean, it's a violation that has to be, probably can't be dealt with administratively.
So all fees are not created equal?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good point, right.
Councilmember Wright.
I'm in favor of this. I'm supportive of it. The one thing I do want to mention, because we are talking about parking meter issues, is I really think the city should look into making it easier for people to pay for the parking meters. I've been in a couple of different locales now, around in Bethany Beach and places in DC, recently in San Francisco, where you can pay with a credit card. And I think one of the things that this does is it actually allows you to increase the amount of each meter, because the burden for people that they find to be a pain in the butt is actually finding the quarters, right? So in DC now, it's like eight, it's a quarter for eight minutes. So you have to find, you know, approximately eight quarters to sit there for, to be there for an hour. But if you're dipping your credit card and you're paying like $2 an hour, people don't even think twice about it. So I think there's always this question of, well, how do we pay for it? I think you could pay for it by actually increasing the cost to use the meter. And for the vast majority of people, it wouldn't be an issue. They'd actually find it more convenient and be willing to pay the higher fee. They wouldn't think twice about it. Now, granted, everyone doesn't have a credit card or debit card. That's the one issue.
Assistant manager has a comment on that.
I just wanted to share with the council that last week, we did have a meeting with the vendor that was retained by Montgomery County. They're basically going to where you can actually pay a lot of your, in the lots, you know, in the parking garages, actually using your cellphone. So they came in to kind of do a demo and we're waiting to get some more information back from them on some questions we had raised.
Good. And in my travels, I constantly take my camera and take pictures of people's systems. And I forgot to send you the pictures. I will do that. Councilmember Robinson.
I'm okay with to speak to Councilmember Wright's point with paying by credit card, as long as it's done at the meter. I don't really like the idea of raising parking fees. And I don't, I'm particularly not in support of taking away the meters entirely and having you go to a kiosk, which is what they just did in a large parking lot in College Park. Because there's a line at the kiosk and instead of taking out a quarter and sticking it in the meter, you have to go and stand in line at the kiosk after remembering your number. And there you can, you're only allowed to pay by credit card. Or maybe I don't think I have that right. But it's cumbersome. It's cumbersome to have a separate kiosk where you go and stand in line in order to pay, particularly if you just want to go in for 10 minutes. And the other thing I wanted to ask our city clerk is the three under chapter 8.32, on page two, there are three license and permit fees which are a significant amount of money. And I wonder if you have any history on how much we have been collecting for clairvoyance, fortune telling, and palmistry, which are $250 each?
We do not have, to my knowledge, one of those establishments in the city at this time. If that question comes up, we'll deal with it then. But I could say now we are not collecting any license fees for that purpose.
So we're, okay, so we're not foregoing a significant income stream?
No, and in fact, that, those fees are referenced in another part of the code.
Oh.
So by doing this, you are not repealing that license fee.
Okay.
And I did want to note that by the same token, the peddler's transient merchant license fees are significantly higher than is listed in here.
Uh huh.
And they are also listed in another part of chapter, chapter eight or title eight. And then finally, if I can note one thing, I did notice a typographical error on page five. At the very bottom of the parking fines and penalties, section 13.24.050, the fine, the vehicle impound fee is listed as $15 and not changing. And that is to change to $25. So if, if you desire to do so when you move it, if you, if it could be moved with that correction, because that's just an error. I missed that one.
I think we'll assume the mover and second are fine with that addition.
Move it with that addition.
And following up on Councilmember Robinson's questions, I'm assuming that we don't have any press passes that have been permitted. Councilmember Clay.
I just wanted to say that it didn't occur to me until Council Wright, Councilmember Wright just pointed it out, that I have in fact been paying a quarter for eight minutes of parking in Washington DC. I had to sit here and calculate it up. I do want to make the comment that of the three systems, paying a quarter, I went to Annapolis this weekend, didn't have enough quarters and got a parking ticket. I went someplace where the choice was quarters or using your cellphone to pay. And I couldn't figure out how to use my cellphone to pay for it. It seemed like you had to preregister for that service. I didn't really like that. But I have yet to get a, I may be paying eight cents for, a quarter for eight minutes, but I have yet to get a ticket when I have to take my car into DC, usually to drop something off at work. And I use the kiosk thing. And you stick your credit card in it. And I always hit maximum time because I just, I want to be sure. For $4, I'd rather not get whatever the $40 ticket is. So I always hit thing, pay the $4, even if I know I'm only going to be in there an hour, because somebody always stops to talk to me on the way out of the building. And I do, I do find it inconvenient to have, I never, there's never a line. But I do find it inconvenient to have to go back to my car, you know, stick it in the window and come back. But even so, given all the various trade-offs, I prefer that system. Almost everybody has a debit card or an ATM card or so. But the cell, like if my mother had to park using a cellphone, she drives around Tacoma Park, she, that wouldn't work out. So I would love to have easier ways to pay than the, than the quarters and would support bringing that back. Talk about it.
Any other comments? Any public comments? Okay, it's first-term ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We now have a first-term ordinance, rescinding the ordinance authorizing installation of speed humps on the 100 block of Sherman Avenue, ordinance 2010-44.
Move.
Moved by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Wright. Any council comments? Any public comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. And we have a first-term ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with a consultant to assist with matters related to proposed relocation of Washington Adventist Hospital.
Move the ordinance, second.
Moved by Councilmember Snapper, second by Councilmember Clay. Any council comments? Any public comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. We'll now take a short break. We're back. This discussion of recreation is at the request of a number of council members who wanted to discuss the city's approach to recreation services. And so I will go to them. Councilmember Seans.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for having this item on the agenda tonight. I thought that I pushed my button early so I could speak first because I, I think it's, would be helpful to have a little historical perspective. Back in 1999, the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee submitted public safety recommendations to the city council. It was presented on February 1st, 1999. And I'd just like to, I've highlighted a couple of recommendations that were presented to the council at that time. And under the heading builder recreation center, they mentioned that the high population of youth in Tacoma Park, the low amount of park space per capita in the city, and the insufficient number of youth programs all result in too much free time for youth. They go on and say the center, speaking about a recommendation for a new community center, can be a year-round location where teenagers can be occupied through supervised recreation during the hours of 3:00 to 10:00 p.m. In addition to recreational services, the center should provide educational programs that will have a constructive and permanent influence on the future conduct of our children. Teenagers will acquire skills to help them grow into responsible, productive adults. They also mentioned that with this facility, a government-wide focus on crime prevention, the police will be able to channel problem young people into positive programs, and the community will be able to quickly develop programs that address specific problem areas. Later in the recommendations, they mentioned the mix of recreation, education, and personal growth programs within the center. Tacoma Park serves a population far greater than those who reside just within our boundaries. And so they recognized in that report that poverty, crime, and addiction have no boundaries. Thus, neither should the solutions to these problems. Tacoma Park citizens do not shirk from responsibility. We seize opportunities, they said in that report. And one-time investment for a facility in Tacoma Park that can provide educational and growth-oriented recreation will surely mean that future expenditures to warehouse our youth will be reduced. I mention that because at that time, that was one of the first documents that was a precursor to the construction here that became our very beautiful community center. But the community had a vision that they started with. And the next steps were several months, if not years, of, of community discussions to envision what it was that we really wanted. That led to, as everyone knows, the building of this community center. And I'm sure the community would remind us that we spent far more than we expected to in building this. But there was a vision, and that vision continued. It was about the, nearing the completion of the community center that Barb Matthews joined us as the city manager and brought with her much sounder management than we had experienced in recent past. And that led to a much better-run finance department. And we thank you for that, Barb. Also, the police department with Chief Ricucci. But there remained some frustrations with the recreation department. It never attained the vision that at least had been talked about during the, the development and the designing of the community center. And that's not to say that the rec department hasn't done good, because it has done well. And we've seen, we received many compliments from community members about the programs that are offered here and about the improvements in programs that we've seen through the years. that are offered here and about the improvements in programs that we've seen through the years. But I think council members have also heard complaints from the community that the center is not, and the recreation department is not fulfilling the community vision. And in fairness to the departing director, I think the vision itself was never clearly articulated by this council or our predecessors, so that Barb and Deborah never really had the clear direction on what we expected from the recreation department. And actually, as I've read some of the descriptions in that early recommendation, you'll hear that it's more than just a recreation department that was envisioned at the, many years ago when this community center was started. I firmly believe that at this point where Ms. Haideman is planning to leave the city, that it is a good time for the council and the community to clearly articulate what our vision is and take the time to do that before we go out to find a replacement for Ms. Haideman. I think it's, the way to do that is to charge the recreation committee with reviewing the vision and assessing community desires and develop a new written vision for how we want to use this community center. And, refer to my notes here. Getting lost, but just about done. I think what, the reason that it's important to do that now before we hire a new recreation director is that what we had, what the community voiced as a vision before the community center was built, although everybody kept saying it's recreation center and it's recreation, many of the things that were envisioned were not recreation in nature, and many of the complaints that we've heard have been that the department is not doing the things that were not recreation-related. So I think we have to decide, what do we really want this department to do, and then we go out and hire the person that is best equipped to fulfill the community vision. I think that what I heard here, and what I still hear from people, is that they want more than just fun and games, and I think it would also be the time to look at how we incorporate stronger partnerships and better volunteer, or more use of volunteers, and closer integration with the police department in the use of this facility. Thank you.
Other comments? Councilmember Clay.
Thank you, Councilmembers Siemens, for getting us started, that was very nice. I've talked about recreation for a long time, talked about it a lot when I campaigned for office and have had a lot of interaction with the recreation program, and my children have participated in the recreation programs. Kids that I have had living at my house in sort of foster care, if you will, have participated in the recreation program, have enjoyed many of the things that the rec department puts forth. I have a fair amount of experience in recreation and have long been interested in it, a lot of the work that I have done is in marine sports, but still have done a lot of work as an administrator in a recreation program in a larger city. One of the things I think is interesting about the rec program here is something I sent out to the other council members as a comparison of what our program looks like staffing-wise compared to what the, for example, the Greenbelt program looks like. So we have a bit larger city, but we have a significantly larger recreation budget. I think the recreation budget for the city of Greenbelt is something like $5 million. And they have a significantly higher percentage of money that comes back in to the recreation department, both they get more money back, but also they get a much higher percentage of what their actual overall budget is back into the recreation department. And I certainly am interested in looking more at that kind of a standard to see what could happen in the city of Tacoma Park, because I think if we could get more of a return from the activities that we engage in, we could also then engage in more activities. Occasionally, people have said, well, it means that you want to cut the recreation budget, and that's not the case. I think that we could do more, we could have more money and get more of a return. I think one of the ways that I differ particularly from Councilmember Siemens, but maybe from some of the other people on the committee, is that I would actually like to see a smaller administrative staff in the recreation department and a larger group of folks who have more flexibility in the programming and activities that we engage in. So, one of the reasons why I'm interested in that is because what I noted in the rec departments that I worked in and worked with is that a lot of the folks that worked there actually had been participants in the recreation programs, and there was a movement through those, the part-time and temporary and other positions that were created, but it also provided a place for kids who had, you know, gone to school and been through the recreation program to get a job. In particular, when I worked at the city of Oakland, I used to hire kids who had aged out of foster care, and they might stay in the program for a year, some folks stayed for a couple of years, and then they would move on to other jobs, but the structure of how that program was developed allowed for kind of a, it would, there was job training and there was transition through that, and there was kind of fresh young people and new ideas, but it also gave people who participated in the recreation programs, like they could see themselves becoming a staff member, and there was actually an opportunity to do that. And so I think I would like to see more of a balance for that in the program. One of the things that folks talk about, and we have the ActiveNet software for the recreation department, and I would like to see more user-friendly software than the ActiveNet software. There are a lot of different models of software that are far more, far more user-friendly than ActiveNet, and would like to see someone who is really interested in pursuing that and making the interface then with signing up for programs easier than it is today. It's no secret that I've been interested in aquatics program. When I first came on the council, I started asking, actually when I was running for office six years ago, I was asking questions about the pool, and then the pool became in play, and I think that that's something that I would really like to see, is the city to take an interest in an aquatics program. I realize that the Piney Branch Pool is open right now, it's not open on Saturdays, which is kind of frustrating. The programs aren't as well-integrated into an overall city perspective or city program as I think they could be if the city actually took a lead in running aquatics programs. I think there are a lot of other opportunities to engage in aquatics activities as well beyond swimming, there are a lot of entities to partner with around, you know, kayaking and canoeing, and there's a community sailing program in the District of Columbia that we could get access to, I think would be great. I think I would like to see, take a better look through the, particularly through the recreation committee of our use of resources, how we use the buses that we have, how we use the pool, the possibility of using parks in recreation programming. A lot of recreation programs have more of a merged parks and recreation model, and I think that there are some opportunities there to do programming in the local parks. That was actually probably the only way that I engaged in recreation when I was a kid, was when the recreation department actually came to a local park that I could get to. As Councilmember Siemens said, I'm really interested in the use of volunteers in recreation. I think that there's been some good success in that, and I would like to see that expand. Interested in how the recreation department engages in partnership. There've been a lot of suggestions around partnership with the library and other entities that I would like to see more of. I'm also really interested in the recreation department's youth development. I think there's, when I was campaigning, there was kind of an interesting conversation going on amongst the constituents about what the recreation department is, and some people saw the whole purpose of the recreation department essentially as a gang prevention program, and that was sort of the limit of the value that they saw of recreation. But I think that it's important for us to have a much broader visioned recreation department, and I'm really interested in how we do youth leadership, engage young people in business development activities and those sorts of things. We do have a teen, teen leadership council now. I think over the last four years, I've talked a little bit about trying to get the council to engage a leadership program with the youth, and then the recreation department came up with this teen leadership council. But I'm really, would like to see a teen leadership council that's kind of more in the model of the Young Activist Club than a leadership council that's specifically about recreation programming in and of itself, so that there, I mean, that's a place to start is what is the recreation program that you want, but I think, I'd like to see them more engaged in the broader community and more developer, development around that. And while this doesn't relate to the staffing issue specifically, I think that the teen space and the game room space are too small, and I'd like to see some creative thinking about how people use space, particularly how, what's important to the teenagers and how the teenagers use space and program design. And I know that we're having this conversation, and we have a very active, I think one of our, one of our best kind of longstanding committees has been the recreation committee, volunteer engagement, very enthusiastic, but I also think it might behoove us to actually look at providing professional support with the group that actually does more recreation planning and consulting.
Can you just say that last one again? I didn't follow that one.
Well, we're having a conversation about, you know, our vision for the recreation department and what we want the recreation department to be, and I was actually going to talk about this a little bit in the committees' report, but one thing that strikes me about the committees that we have is that we have those people who have a lot of interest, and they're excited, and they have, you know, like, I could be on the recreation committee, and I have like personal recreation experience, but we have a lot of different resources that are here in the city. We have the pool, and we have the bus, and we have the parks, and we have our staff, and we have a particular demographic, and there, what I would like to see is professional support from people who do planning around these issues that actually, because, you know, do we have somebody on our staff, for example, that has a lot of expertise in aquatics? Well, we haven't run an aquatics program, so we haven't really necessarily looked for that in terms of, you know, what we're looking for in our professionals. There is a lot of information about how you serve particular demographics of your community and the programming that works well, and I think it would be nice to have a group that does this professionally. Like, we hire professional planners, we've hired, even though we have a planning department, and we have very competent planners in our planning department, we have hired planning consultants, for example, for the New Hampshire Avenue Corridor Study, and to do economic development analysis that then goes into the decision-making that our own planners make, and I think it would be worthwhile to make an investment in having a professional entity that does recreation planning on a larger scale come and look at all of the different resources and the structure and the demographics of our group, and give us some advice, working with our recreation committee and our staff, together.
Thanks, that was helpful. Councilmember Wright.
Thank you. I'm glad we've started to have this conversation. To me, this is really about the council figuring out a way to give clear direction to the city manager on what we want from a policy perspective as regards recreation. My opinion, I'm not saying that this is shared by all council members, is that at times the recreation department and the city manager and city staff have been frustrated about not quite knowing what the council wants as regards to recreation, and I think this is a good opportunity for us to clearly figure out what we want as a collective body. You've heard some different opinions already up here, but I think we need to clearly articulate that and put it in writing. And I just want to be clear that I don't think that this is a criticism of the recreation department or the recreation staff at this point. Since I've been on the council, the recreation department has gotten much better, I think the program has gotten better, the number of people and youth that have been engaged have gotten better, the staff has gotten better. So I just want to be clear to the recreation staff that in my mind, this isn't a criticism of the job you guys are doing, I think you're doing a good job. I think the unique situation is that we are looking to hire a new director, and I think as we undertake that, that is the responsibility of the city manager, I think that and the policy decision are completely interlinked, and that we should have clear policy direction before we pursue hiring that person, because the policy direction may dictate who the best individual would be to lead the recreation department going forward. Now, I don't think that this is going to be something that we're going to come to clear consensus tonight, this is just the beginning of the conversation. I do think through a healthy debate and discussion, we get to a better decision, we get to clearer thinking, but that we also need to put that clarity of thought in writing, because I think that that helps us all know what we're agreeing to or getting on the same page about, and that I hope this process involves the very capable and dedicated recreation committee we have, as well as staff and other interested residents.
Councilmember Schultz.
A list of things I want to say, and I would start by saying I do think that this is a very welcomed conversation and one that's been overdue. First of all, I want to thank our departing department head, Deborah, Deborah Haideman, who I think from all reasonable measures has done an excellent job here. She's been in this position far longer than I've been on the city council, so I'm not in a position to cite chapter and verse, but I think the activities and the programs of the rec department speak for themselves and speak to your leadership, so thank you. And I agree with Councilmember Siemens, is that the recreation department has done well. Interesting that in my, during the time that I was running for office and knocking on all the doors that I could knock on in Ward 6, and in the intervening months, talking at various community meetings and, you know, all the contact I've had with constituents, I have never had a single, anybody at all speak to me or had a comment about, or a complaint, I should say, about the rec department or the recreation programs. That isn't to say that there isn't room for complaint, and I'm going to talk about that in a bit, because there's always room for improvement, but there's been an awful lot of topics brought up to my attention, recreation hasn't been one of them. I do think we need to think about, as we go forward on these discussions, about raising fees for non-residents' use of our rec center and our rec programs. I just think that the residents of this city pay a lot of taxes for the privilege of being a Tacoma Park resident, and I think that there needs to be a larger differential of, because of the taxes that people pay, between the residents and the non-residents who make use of the rec program. It's not to exclude non-residents from these programs, because it's a rich environment where everybody can benefit by doing activities together regardless of which side of the boundary line that we live on, but it would help to accomplish one of Councilmember Clay's goals of raising But it would help to accomplish one of Councilmember Clay's goals of raising more revenue so that we can do more things with recreation in the city. And I happen to think that there's a lot of residents in the city who probably can afford to pay a lot more and would be willing to pay more on either side of the boundary lines for recreation programs and in return do more of providing scholarships to those families and young people who simply do not have their financial resources otherwise. So that's something to think about. I have real concerns about the role of the Recreation Committee, and we're going to be talking about that a little later this evening when we talk about city committees in general. But in particular, the Rec Committee, I think, we're far from doing a good job as a City Council of utilizing the resources that members of the Rec Committee can bring to the recreation program. And we should be, as we speak right now, tapping those people to be commenting and influencing our conversation here, and we're not doing that. And I've gotten a lot of feedback from Rec people who sit on the Rec Committee of their frustration in serving on that committee. And I'll leave that, I'll stop on that point right now. As was said earlier during the public comment period, I think we probably need to try to do a better job of trying to serve the hard-to-serve population. Or alternatively ascertain what is the definition of the hard-to-serve population? How big is it and to what extent are we penetrating and getting into serving that population? I don't want to criticize the Recreation Department for not doing it because I don't know. It could be that the Recreation Department's programs are doing a good job of reaching the so-called hard-to-serve population. But I'd be interested to find, to learn more about that. It's important to also understand that the Recreation Department is, probably comes in contact with more constituents than almost any other agency with the, perhaps save the city agency than save maybe the Department of Public Works, who is getting in touch with our trash at least once a week and other services. But they serve the seniors, they serve adults, they serve young adults, they serve teenagers, they serve pre-teens, they serve children and they serve toddlers. And not only do they serve some of those people, but a lot of those people serve as volunteers in the programs who are trying to help. So I think it's a complex job that Recreation Departments, this one and any Recreation Department, has inherently in trying to serve its constituency, or constituent, make that plural, constituencies. And I think we need to be mindful of the challenge of trying to allocate resources and programs, which are always scarce, and facility space, which is always scarce, across all those constituencies in a fair and balanced way. And then finally, the last thing I might want to say here is that the Recreation Center itself is in our ward. I've been in it many, many, many times. Actually, more for purposes of participating in community meetings because that's where most of the community meetings occur in Ward Six. And that building is old. It's just, it looks okay from the outside, but inside it is just old and worn. I am very proud, on the other hand, of the quality and intensity of programs that the Director, Mr. Webster, manages to wring out of that space because the place is always, you know, hopping. But it just, I'm saying this because it's to emphasize what I consider a growing urgency to get this Recreation Center replaced. It needs to be in the county's capital budget, I believe, since it's basically a county or Maryland National Park Planning Commission facility. And the potential for what could be on that site is enormous. It could be a much more versatile center and more modern and offer more services and programs to more people when the day comes that we can get that building replaced because right now it's getting to look like a relic. So, those are just some comments. I'm not trying to prove a point here or have an overall policy direction that I'm advocating, but I think these are issues that need to be fed into this discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember Snapper.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a lot of things that I agree with most of what my other council members have suggested, so I'll try to keep my remarks brief. First of all, I've been on the council for four or five years and I've seen quite dramatic improvement in the Recreation Department. I think many programs are working quite well. But I still hear from constituents that they would like to see them move in some new directions. And I say that understanding that, to me, recreation, I did work as a playground director at one point, is one of the hardest jobs because it's entirely people. You aren't pushing, you know, snow around the street, you aren't digging potholes and so on, things that don't have a tendency to move around and change in front of you. But Rec is all people, so it's how to get people to do things. And I consider that one of the hardest jobs. And in addition, our Recreation Department undertakes programs for a very diverse group of people, not just, you know, racially, ethnically, I mean by age, by income, and so on. And this makes it even harder. But I don't think we should rest on our laurels. I think we should look for some new directions. And I am, as I've indicated on previous occasions, willing to push for more revenue so that those programs can be, those endeavors, new endeavors can be done. As for hiring a new director, this is an issue that's been discussed quite a bit. I understand those who think we should wait to hire a new director until we have a new vision for where we want to go, and I'm pretty sympathetic to that. But as someone who has worked in agencies that are without directors for long periods of time, I can say that it's important to remember that morale really declines dramatically. The function of the agency really tails off when you don't have a director. When you go these long periods without a director, it's very hard to keep the programs going, it's very hard to start new ones, staff get discouraged and leave. So on balance, for me, I support finding a director who will be able to do, move in new directions. A new person in general has space to move in new directions. And if the council gave that kind of instruction to a new director, I think it's an opportunity for that new director to take that vision and run with it. One thing I hear in my ward is a strong sentiment to improve youth programs, especially about how to involve more youth in Ward Five. Ward Five is pretty far away from the community center. It's certainly very far away from New Hampshire. It's practically impossible for folks to get there. And while folks support existing programs and those who have used them are supportive, they want to see those programs expanded in the sense of getting more Ward Five residents involved. This is a complicated issue, involves transportation, it involves getting access to folks who are hard to reach and so on. It's not, I'm not saying this is an easy sort of thing to do. And on that last point, I support the suggestions made by other council members that perhaps we should look to bringing in some outside experts or consultants or even those with experience in other recreation departments who can take a look at what we're doing and offer insights as to where we might go, new approaches, maybe new approaches to old problems. I'm not a fan of throwing out the, you know, baby with the bathwater, but I think it's a good opportunity for everyone to sit down and say, okay, we're doing pretty good, let's see if we can do better. And I'll stop there.
Excuse me, Councilmember Robinson.
I think it's good that we're, as a council, trying to articulate our goals for the Recreation Department. And I agree that you guys have made great strides in the past years, in the years I've been on the council, it seems like it anyway, although I don't have a very good grasp really on the kinds of programs that we offer or how effective they are, honestly. I see them and they look good from the outside, but I don't have a very good understanding. And I think it's good that, to some extent, we try to articulate strategies on how to get to the goals that we think are important. So I think those things are good. I can see how us trying to micromanage things might become problematic, so I'm sensitive to that. But I hope that we give useful guidance from time to time. And we need to make sure that we budget effectively, and that includes paying attention to how much the programs bring in and what effective scales, how do we scale things right? And I think that part of this conversation is a discussion of the partnership we have with our City Manager. And I recently, ever since I went to Boise, Idaho last year, my colleagues have heard me talk about this, ever since I went to Boise where they have a fairly strong council form of government, I've been intrigued by this notion. And what that means in Boise is that the council has the authority to hire Directors of Departments. I don't know a heck of a lot more of it than that, but in a sense, that's what we're grappling with right now. What do we want in a director or what do we want in a program? And so the more we talk about it, the more I start thinking, well, if that's what we really want, then we should take the full responsibility and think about hiring a person. Then it's on our, then we have less tendency to criticize perhaps because it's our choice. No, I mean, we don't want to manage the director, thanks a lot, that's your job. But I am intrigued by that notion. Other than that, I don't have much to say.
Being intrigued by that would lead to a vast change in how the city is structured and how we do things.
Well, I don't know about how vast it would be, but it's certainly--
It would require charter and code changes.
Yes, it would.
Maybe it would just be half vast.
That's right, half vast, there you go. Maybe just half vast.
Oh.
I just want to say that I think in many ways, this is the type of discussion that could be seen as fitting in a budget discussion. We didn't have it in the budget discussion, but it was, the timing of it is brought about by the fact of a change in leadership in the department. I think it can be easy to get bound up in the fact that we're talking about it because there's going to be a change in leadership in the department. But I think we don't have to get stuck with that timing. I agree with Councilmember Snapper that there are reasons not to try and go that route. I think that over the years, I have also seen a great improvement in the leadership and the direction that the Recreation Department has been taking. I think that a lot of people in town, judging by their, they themselves enrolling in programs that the department is offering or enrolling their children in department offerings, and the increase in the numbers of people and the revenues coming in from that shows that there has been a large improvement. As I've talked with people, I've heard people say that they're much happier with the offerings. I think that we have, the council in the past has been, we have generally given policy advice that has been reiterated over the years by different councils that I've been on. It's tended to be general advice that what we wanted the department to do was to provide offerings to seniors and to youth that didn't need to be covered by the fees charged for those programs, that those were the types of things that were a priority for the council, and that other programs in other areas for other targeted audiences did need to kind of cover their costs, whether it be resident adults or non-residents. I've heard arguments that in many ways, this community and adjacent communities which are not in the city operate very much as one, particularly in the area of youth recreation. And that's because the school boundaries cross and include kids in the city and kids in the adjacent county areas. And so I can understand how it's important to have all of those kids involved so that they can be in programs where their friends from school are involved and not have kind of artificial barriers to keep that from happening. I think there has been a, in many ways, schizophrenic direction from the council about how the Recreation Department should set up fees for programs. On the one hand, some council members have said, we need to keep them low so that people can afford them. Other people have said, well, we need to recognize that people can, some people can afford to pay more and we essentially need to have a much more sliding scale of fees and set up scholarships. I think the council has never provided clear enough direction on how we feel about that. And I think there's been a change, potentially a change over time toward recognition that more sliding scale and wider range may be the way to go. It certainly sounds like that from some of the comments from my colleagues tonight. I think the way to go forward with this is to recognize that the council has an interest in refining our vision for recreation in the city, that that is a wider discussion than just what triggered our interest in it now in terms of the change in leadership in the department, and that we can go forward with this discussion and provide a clearer policy direction in what we would like to see. And that it doesn't have to be tied to any particular hire. It's helpful for the City Manager to know in hiring a Recreation Director, the policy direction that the council would like to see. To the extent that we can do that before the hire, that's great, but I think that refined policy discussion and decision by the council is an ongoing process. And I think it's something that can take place kind of outside of the formal budget process that happens in the spring. It's something that we can do now and it's something that we can devote some time to. And I think that will be valuable for the council, for the City Manager, for the Recreation Department, the Recreation Committee. Department, the Recreation Committee, and the city as a whole. So we will continue this discussion. We have other, one other item on tonight's agenda that I think we need to spend some time on. I want to see if anybody else has any additional comments they want to make tonight, and if we can keep those relatively short, and then we'll go to the next item. Councilmember Clay.
I think your statement about the hire and the idea that we can disconnect the two precludes a significant portion of what both Councilmember Siemens and I, I think, actually have discussed in terms of the structural issues. I don't want to misrepresent Councilmember Siemens, but I think it would be fair to say he's interested in more volunteer-based models around recreation, which could ultimately affect staffing structures. And I am interested in a different staffing structure that is not so much related to volunteers, but about creating opportunity for people coming up through the program. And I feel like we had this conversation, and we had a vote on it, and when we voted, we voted to stall on the hire of the Recreation Director until we could have that conversation. I think it's unfortunate that the conversation is happening now on July, it's the 18th. And we've definitely had some time to have started this conversation earlier, and we didn't, which is, I think, unfortunate, but I think that moving forward would stifle the options that might be available and the interests of some council members.
Councilmember Seitz.
Thank you, Mayor. I also think it's unfortunate we haven't had this conversation in the past. I think it was a year ago, the last budget cycle, when I had raised the question about the increased volunteerism, maybe with a dramatic scale that I was presenting at that time, but still requested that we be able to talk about that, and that didn't happen during the last year. So I'm kind of put off by the idea that now, gee, we've got to make a quick move now because we don't have time for the discussion. I'm glad that we are starting the discussion now. I, again, I think, I think the results of the discussion could make implementing a, hiring someone at this point, be hiring the wrong person. I would certainly support hiring or appointing an interim department head to fill the gap until we do have, complete the discussion, but I think it's important to have the Recreation Committee involved in assessing the community and making recommendations to this council so we can finalize our vision for the department. Again, I'm not sure that it's just vanilla recreation that we want, and that's why I'm hesitant to say that we go out and make a permanent hire at this point. And I appreciate Councilmember Clay's, you know, thoughts about reorganizing. I think there are enough questions, enough balls up in the air that it is good management at this point to decide what we want before we actually go out and start looking for it.
Councilmember Wright.
So I think we should try and focus on giving the city managers some clear direction around our opinion on how to move forward on this particular issue about whether to hire or wait till there's some more clear policy direction. And I realize that, you know, the decision to hire staff is the city manager's decision. I'm not suggesting that we would engage in who the city manager hires specifically, but I do think it's a critical issue to resolve, and I do think that the policy and the person are very interconnected. And I'm very respectful of Councilmember Snipper's comments about departments not having leadership can be demoralizing and can reduce morale. But I also think, you know, we're at an inconvenient time in the sense that I don't think we're going to have a conversation next Monday and be wrapped up before we have the recess. But at the same time, I would be very hesitant, if I were applying for a job, to be a rec. director in a city where it wasn't clear what the policy was and what the policymakers wanted. And so I'd be concerned that we wouldn't get the best candidates applying or saying yes to an offer made. So despite the downsides of not having a rec. director for a few additional months, I think the upside of waiting on that, making sure we get a director who is, A, knows what the direction is from a policy perspective on recreation, and B, a director aligned with whatever that policy is, I think outweighs the downside of waiting a little bit. So I think the main issue we should try and resolve is whether there's, where each of us sits on whether we should wait or not. I think we voted on this before, and my sense was that there were four people who thought we should wait until the policy direction was determined, but maybe people's opinions have shifted on that.
Councilmember Robinson.
My feeling hasn't shifted. I think an interim director is a good idea. I'd like to have us hire a director, but that's not part of our mandate at this point, so I can certainly understand us not doing that. But I agree that I'd like to see, have more of this kind of conversation first.
Councilmember Schultz.
I can see the merit of having this policy discussion before we proceed with the hiring of a new director, but I don't think we should just leave it at that. I think we have an obligation to the employees of the Recreation Department, not to mention the city manager, to be pretty explicit about what kind of a delay we're talking about. We're talking about 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, but we need to, if we're going to recommend that, by a vote here, or a straw vote, or whatever we do, I think that we need to be serious about having this discussion, getting it aired out, figuring out what the heck our policy is in fact going to be, and just get it done. Because otherwise, I think it's grossly, could be grossly unfair to the people that work for us.
Councilmember Robinson.
My wife works at a school where they have annual contracts. That's how they, that's how they're hired, and when a director of a department is, moves on, takes another job or whatever, they typically have an interim director for a year.
So what do you want to propose, a period of time? Councilmember Siemens.
I think I just heard Councilmember Robinson propose a year. I think I was going to suggest that by January 1st, that we would have our work done and positioned in place, and I know that's a time from now, but we also have two months of recess during that time, with August being our recess and December being our recess.
And an election as well.
And a hope.
And an election as well that may eliminate the whole discussion.
Councilmember Wright, was that?
It's a new law.
It's a new--
It's a new-- I would suggest we could work with more speed than that, and I think that we shouldn't push this down the pipe to having a new council. We know at least one council member will be new on the council, and I think that, you know, the new council member has time to get up to speed, and they're going to be trying to figure out, you know, what's going on. So I would suggest we actually try and finish it more quickly, that by the end of September, we have a clear recommendation. And I think the way forward on that is that we actually, some council members during the recess draft a set of recommendations about what our policy changes are going to be, which then could be reacted to in a combination of offline and in meetings, obviously with no more than three council members meeting at any one time.
Councilmember Clay.
That's interesting. I think it'd be nice to be able to do it faster. That would preclude us having professional support for it, which I think, given all the different things that we're talking about being in play, you know, with pools and buses and parks and a recreation center owned by the county, and looking at demographic analysis and other kinds of things, we don't know that we would get the best solution there. And I'm not sure that it would be fair to have a process that's about us meeting three at a time, because I'm not sure how effective that would be at engaging the public. I also wouldn't object to, what'd you say, January 1st deadline? We could probably get that and engage, you know, a quick report. But I'm kind of partial to the year, and I'll tell you, the reason why is because if you, if you take a year from now, that gets you somebody who plans all the way through a school year and a summer camp year. And so you've got somebody who's your leader through that process. So I imagine that the school year is planned now, and you have somebody then who's able to implement the school year activities as they're planned and prep for the summer and get everybody through the summer. It gives you enough time to make the changes, to go through the hiring process, to do the other kinds of things that you might have to align, to prepare for somebody then who comes in at the end of that time period, and you could, you know, roll over and have some overlap. Which isn't to say that I, you know, I'm not opposed to the other two ideas, but just, you know, I think that a year, especially in this timeframe right now, where someone might start at the end of August, has some appeal for that, you know, sort of running it through an entire cycle. It's been interesting, you know, I've done summer camp process, and I know the process for that, but it's been interesting to watch my partner plan for, she's a summer camp director, and that's all she does, kind of, is the summer camp, and there's this whole big, long process in this area that starts essentially in November, and camp fairs in January, which totally foreign to me before we came here. So I think that there's some appeal to me for the year, for that reason.
Councilmember Seitz.
Well, I guess I have a difference of opinion, I think that's the way to say it. I think going a year without a director would just be hard for a number of reasons. I have serious concerns about something like that. One is that a tremendous amount of planning of the programs, just continuing existing programs, would have to be shifted to the remaining staff. It would be difficult to start anything new under those circumstances. As someone who is currently in my day job, filling exactly this problem, that is, last fall, you know, the director of this little office left, and I was asked to fill in, it's just an enormously difficult position to be in for somebody to fill, that kind of thing. And I, you know, I, we can discuss whether we have sufficient staff or not, but losing an entire person at the head of administration of recreation for that long a period just seems like a recipe for losing all the gains that have been made by recreation. So I would urge my fellow council members to come up with either a much shorter timeframe or a method that doesn't leave the Recreation Department without a director or interim director, some kind of sufficient staffing, just sheer doing the work, planning and carrying out things. You know, I'm in a minority here in arguing that a new director could, in fact, move in new directions, but I think that that's what would happen in any case. Even if we had a vision, we would have interviews or some kind of session with the new director, and we would be explaining what the vision was, and we would have to get buy-in by the new person and so on for that. And so to me, I, again, would argue that we should go ahead, hire somebody good, and then when we have taken the time, and I agree that a sufficient period is necessary to develop a good, solid way for, plan for a way forward, that's when we could bring it in. I think that the city manager has brought on some new staff, and they have taken departments in new directions, and so it's, I think it's, you know, demonstrably possible to do that.
Councilmember Schultz.
I think we flatter ourselves here, some of us, to think that the gravity of the future of the Recreation Center is going to require an entire year, or even six months, to figure out a policy direction. I'd like to remind our council, my fellow council members, that our job is to determine policy, not to presume that we know how to run a recreation department, because we don't. I've never run anything that has to do with recreation, so I don't know anything about the subject. I'm very proud to boast about the things that I'm expert on, and to interject that expertise into the conversation on stuff that I know what I'm talking about, but I'm also smart enough to know when I don't know what I'm talking about. Recreation is one of those things, and that's why we hire professionals to do it. I think that we just need to strap on our work shoes, figure out what policies we want the, the kind of, the types of programs and kinds of services that we want to have. Most of us have lived in Tacoma Park for many years, and we know who our constituencies are, what they're made of, and the kind of people that want it. We know the kind of complaints that we receive from some of our constituents with regard to the adequacy, inadequacy of recreation programs. I'm not going to impose myself between my constituents and the Recreation Department and tell my constituents that I think I know what's best for your recreation, regardless of whatever age they may be. I'm not at all convinced that we need to bring in outside consultants to tell us how to run a recreation program. I think some of the ideas that Councilmember Clay, Councilmember Siemens have talked about for new directions are interesting ones, and some of them may be quite practical to implement. I think it makes more sense if we want to bring in an outside consultant to have our new Recreation Director in office, know who that person is, and have him or her on the job so that they can work with a consultant benefit by interacting with the outside consultant or consultants, so that they can have buy-in to the program. The last thing I want to do is hire a consultant who comes in with all kinds of studies and recommendations and tells us what we think, and then have a new Recreation Director get hired who says, well, I think the consultant's work was basically useless and irrelevant, and besides, I'm the director and I'm just not going to follow all this stuff. I mean, you cannot predict how those things are going to go, and we will have wasted a lot of time and money. And I'll repeat again that-- And I'll repeat again that, so that's why I do think it would make more sense to get the Director hired after we've helped determine the policy direction, and then bring in any outside consultants that we, that we and the new Director and the City Manager think would be helpful to redirecting the department into whatever kind of innovative policies and regulations that would seem to make the most sense, and be contemporary with what other municipalities in the state of Maryland and the metropolitan area are doing. Again, I'll say what I said before, because I don't know that it made much of an impression, but I do think that it would be grossly unfair to take out the, sort of say, the quarterback of the team for an extended period of time and expect the Recreation Department to function for a long period of time without missing the skills and the leadership of that person. And if you promote a person within the department to an interim position, fine, but then you still have one person down, and you're understanding that whatever's being done is temporary, and as long as it's temporary, it doesn't count. In a baseball team, when the general manager hires an interim manager, you don't see player teams winning pennants with interim managers, because everybody knows that the guy that's in interim manager doesn't really have any say, isn't going to be around for the long haul in all probability, and so it puts everybody in a position of just sort of floating for a period of time. So I think it would be mean and unfortunate to take that approach. I do think, though, that we do have an absolute obligation here to set policy and direction, and I think we can do that, and I don't think it should take more than a couple months of hard work. I just can't believe that it's this complicated a problem, that it's going to take that long to do. And if we were to take longer than that, then the progress that has been made already by the City Manager with the task of advertising and selecting candidates, which is well along would be lost at the start of from scratch, which is probably not going to be a healthy reflection on the city, and I hate to see that happen as well. So I think a short delay is reasonable. A long delay is nothing that I could support. I would vote against that.
Let me just add on timing. Our role is to set policy. We can have the policy discussions. If we have to clear out agendas and spend the month of September talking about recreation policy, we can do that. I would propose that we go no longer than the end of September. If we go into October, toward the end of October, we don't have meetings, it's the election, there's a new council, there aren't many meetings in November, a couple meetings in November, and then we're the first of the year. I think if it's this important that we want to impose a halt, I think it's incumbent upon us to make that as short in duration as possible. I don't see any need for outside consultants. I think we can figure out what the policy direction is by ourselves. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with you that I think time is of the essence, but I think that another essence we have is that we want to hear from the community, we want an assessment of the community, and I think the Recreation Committee is a key part of what we want. You know, consultants may be valuable, I think they would be, but I think that the community is paramount. And so I think that in our timing consideration, we have to allow time for that assessment. So I would like to offer a compromise of January 15th, and I say that instead of the first, because if we said the first, we probably would have to have it done by the end of November, since we're off in December. So I would say, you know, by January 15th be done, and the compromise being that we give direction to the Recreation Committee tonight to conduct a, an assessment of the community of programming desires and how they want to see this community center used. And with those two things, I think I, I think we can accomplish what we want to accomplish and allow the time then for the City Manager to actually locate someone and hire them.
Councilmember Robinson.
I'll go back to my experience watching and talking to my spouse about management of leadership in the different departments, and they'll, they'll opt to hire an interim head of a department when it seems like the reasonable thing to do, and a year doesn't seem like too long a time. They seem to be able to work through whatever issues they have, and on the other hand, it's a year, it's a, it's an entity that revolves around a year framework. There's the school year, so you get the school year, and then you get the summer, and then you get to start over again. I think that's maybe what Councilmember Clay was alluding to. I haven't seen any indications of the dire ramifications, Councilmember Schultz, that you kind of sketched out there. I haven't seen that in the, I've seen a half dozen interim heads of departments in that context, and it's always been, usually, I think always a good transition of some sorts, maybe not a great leap forward, but a way to kind of take stock. So that would be my preference in this instance, but I can also see trying to shorten it to some extent. I like Councilmember Siemens' notion of making sure that we get plenty of input from the community. I think that's really important. I know that we could run really fast and try to get it all done in September. I've also noted on many occasions that you can try running really fast up here, but in the end, you don't run really fast, because a whole lot of other things come up in the interim that get in the way, or not get in the way, but that take up our time. Maybe there needs to be a task force to take a six-month, and that would get us into January and come back with some recommendations. Oh, no, never mind, I didn't say that. But I'm okay with sometime early in the year, if that's what it comes down to.
Councilmember Reed.
I would support, basically what I heard the mayor saying. I would vote, I couldn't vote for a year, and I think if the choice were between wait a year and then hire somebody or hire someone now, I would go with hire someone now. A year is too long. I've never seen that more time, a lot more time for us actually produces better work and more produces people forgetting what we talked about and recycling on issues. So I think that the mayor's right on this one. If we want to give direction, I don't think it's rocket science. I think, you know, the, one of the co-chairs of the Recreation Committee is here. If we ask them to quickly convene and give us some feedback that we could put into this process, that would be helpful, but that we could devote some sessions right after recess and come back and then give clear direction, you know, by the end of September, middle of October timeframe. I think that's totally doable. I think we'll get, we'll be able to give clear direction. I don't totally get the idea of hiring the consultant. I know there's, you know, Councilmember Clay suggested the analogous to kind of city planners, and I don't, maybe they're out there, I just don't, I haven't seen lots of recreation consultants that we could pick off the shelf or get out there to, like we could with a city planner to help us with a plan. I think we'd have to go through a big process to select that person if we want to get somebody really good, and I think it would just take a lot of time. So if we thought after we gave policy direction and we had the Director in here, there would be some value in hiring a consultant to rationalize programs or something like that, I'd be open to that idea, but I think we have to do what the mayor suggested we do if we're going to delay.
Try me one more time, please.
I'm wondering whether there's now four votes for one.
I think, I think, you know, in the interest of moving on to the next discussion, which is equally important, I would like to suggest that we take a date that we can agree on, and I would like to say, let's say that we have to have the decision before the next election, before the next council is sworn in, and that we, as soon as possible, and tonight, I don't see why we can't do it, just give direction to the Recreation Committee to do the community assessment. And with those two things, I'd like to just see, you know, three more hands raised and we move on to the next discussion. Can we call a question?
Is there, are you proposing a date?
I'm proposing, what do you, next swearing is November 15th or whatever it is. I look at the calendar. Hold on. November 21. Okay, so it would be seven days before that. 14th, November 14th.
November 14th would be the last one before swearing.
Just because we never do things on time. Okay, so.
Okay, November 14th.
Direction to the Recreation Committee to do a community assessment of recreation.
Those in favor of November 14th raise a hand.
You gotta go.
Those in favor of September 30th. What's your date?
I'm not in favor of anyone. Staying from all of them.
Okay, well, I'm not either, but, sorry, what was the question for clarification over here? Did someone? No.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, so the election's November 8, and typically there is no meeting between then and the inauguration, but so you would have, you would schedule a meeting.
But there's no meeting on the 7th either?
Typically.
You can't really send to September yet, are you?
And there's no meeting on October 20-some, no. October 31. There's no meeting, because that's the MML Legislative Conference.
We can still do it November 14th, if it takes a special act of the mayor to have a meeting, that's how we can decide it.
Then the Rec Committee meets that night.
Sounds like November 14th. City Manager, have any comments?
Do we want to give direction to Rec Committee tonight, or how do we want to handle that?
Can I ask the co-chair of the Rec Committee any sense of any difficulty with getting, kind of organizing some community input?
Or anything you want to say?
My personal view is that community is possible, a formal assessment is not. My personal view, and this is my personal, is that the Recreation Committee has a pretty good informal sense of what is out there, and perhaps a formal assessment could be the job of the Recreation Center. Do I need to repeat that to a microphone?
Yes, you can.
All right, good. Get the chance to repeat this.
My personal sense is that the Recreation Committee has a pretty good informal feeling for what many, not all of the segments of Tacoma are looking for. My sense is that a formal community assessment could be best done, I think, by a new Recreation Director, but input into, into what the vision, the policy for Tacoma would be, that the council would set, could be done in a pretty quick timeframe. I'd like to say that I actually, personally, I don't hear a lot of disagreement about the vision, from what I've heard tonight amongst the bunch of you, I hear some pretty significant differences in implementation and in how to structure budgets, how to structure staff and volunteers and so on. So if what you're looking for is how to put a vision together, how to put some policy guidance together to help the City Manager, the city staff, the Recreation Committee, I think that the Recreation Committee can do, can give that input fairly, in a fairly timely And I think a recreation leader that you would hire could, my personal opinion, that a recreation leader that you could hire could address a lot of the rest. I, just from listening very carefully to you all tonight and not having, you know, had a lot of conversations.
I agree with what you're saying.
But that doesn't mean, Colleen's giving me this look.
That's my blank look, which people sometimes tell me. It's my blank look, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there are significant, there are clearly significant differences in how to implement and how to structure, but I wonder if you can have, have a Recreation Director and staff that really could, could work with you on that, given a fairly firmly articulated direction.
I agree, that's what I thought.
Have I just lost my job as Vice Chair of the Recreation Committee? No, seriously, that's what I'm hearing, and we are happy to help, back to the original question, happy to give input, or if, you know, if the direction is to take, take the lead on some kind of community.
How long do you think?
Input, we can do that. If you're talking about a couple, three meetings in September in different wards, maybe with council members attending, one per ward or two per, you know, doubling up, I think something like that could be organized with not too much trouble. A formal, you know, written assessment or a formal assessment that goes out to a lot of people in the newsletter and comes back, that takes more time, and I'm actually not so sure that would help you right now.
I think as you described it, it would be appropriate, you know, having some announced meetings in the community with the Recreation Committee and maybe that ward and council member going along.
So, okay, so that's my view.
Also, the question on the table was, do we want to give that direction to the Committee tonight, or do we want to hold that off and do it next week after we had time to think about it, or what would be your preference there?
It sounds like we'll request that the Committee get some community input. It sounds like the co-chair, vice chair has some ideas about how they might do that effectively. What was the date? November 18th?
14th.
14th.
January 14th. No, it was November 14th.
I'll just remind my colleagues that some of us may be busy in October with other things.
You're running to ram?
People, there's an election, there may be some activities, there may be some calendar items that require time and effort. items that require time and effort. So it sounds like council wants November 14. We will be back with policy direction on recreation, and direction to hold off on hire until that point. We have one more item on this evening's meeting. It's 11 o'clock. Do people want to have a discussion? Is there going to be an ability to have cohesion discussion at this point in the evening, or do we postpone that discussion? I hear two postpone and one up for it.
I don't care.
Three up for it.
I'm up for it.
Four up for it.
Okay, why don't we say we'll go till 11:20? Committee discussion? The thought here was to take some finite items and dispense with them, start working through the list. We can always add more if somebody comes up with those, but if we can knock a couple of these off, that would be helpful. And there's three bullet points at the top, so if we want to just take them in order. Is council satisfied with the current process for review of applicants for appointment and reappointment? We've changed this over time. We have a process in place currently, is it working? Are these all new lights?
Are they who?
Let me turn them off and see what we got. Councilmember Robinson, followed by councilmember Wright.
I'm satisfied with the current process for review of applicants and appointment and reappointment.
Councilmember Wright.
I'm also satisfied, I think that we originally put this process in place because we, before, had a process where people came before the council formally in front of us for interviews, and basically we had no questions for people, it was almost perfunctory, unless the council member already had an issue with the person. And so it seems to me that it makes sense to continue the process as we have it now.
Councilmember Schultz.
I think that if we're going to have put on the application form the question, have you attended a meeting of this committee or commission, yes or no, that we ought to either make that a requirement or delete the question, because if they check no, we vote for them, if they check yes, we vote for them. And it seems to me, however, that the reason that it's on there was because somebody at some time probably thought that having a candidate be able to say that they've actually attended a meeting of the committee that they think that they wish to join is a rational thing to ask people and to expect of them. And if people are too lazy to even go to one meeting to figure out what it's about, what its mission is, and what the dynamic is, and who it is that sits on the committee, then, you know, I think this would be strange. So I think we ought to decide whether that question ought to be removed from the application or not.
Sounds like you might have an opinion about that.
Well, you want to know my opinion?
I think we figured it out.
What is your opinion?
Everybody got it.
If you really want to know my opinion, I'll tell you, but not here.
Councilman Clay.
Actually, I had the interesting experience this week of hearing from constituents who were unhappy with an appointment that was made, and the idea that it hadn't gone through the process. And so I think that while, for the most part, this process has worked okay, I think that there were some questions related to this most recent appointment that occurred in conversation between council members, and maybe all we really need to do is take note that when there are a couple of questions, we should probably bring the person in front of the council. That might have resolved the issue.
Councilwoman Seaman.
I think the current process has been working well since we made that change a while ago. I would certainly say we should err on the side of bringing the person in if there are questions, as councilmember Clay suggested, and I would agree with councilmember Schultz, that if we're going to ask if they've been to any of the meetings, that implies that we had an interest in people showing, you know, knowing what the committee's about by having gone to it, that we should just make it a requirement. I don't see any problem with that.
That's where I was thinking you might go, but then I decided from your lack of wanting to say that maybe you were thinking to just take the question off.
I prefer to be able to know that a candidate had been to a meeting. One meeting seems to be an awfully meager requirement, but one is certainly better than zip out.
But if we make that a requirement, and there's some mitigating circumstance where it's impossible.
Like the committee doesn't need.
Hasn't met in 10 years.
Then why are we appointing, never mind.
Well, like the Ethics Committee, which only meets when there's need.
I would suggest that we make that a requirement, at least attending one meeting before.
But how about the Ethics Committee?
Well, and we can, the council has the power to waive that requirement anytime they want to, you know, for one appointment where there's mitigating circumstance.
Did you have another comment, councilmember Robinson?
Yeah, I think that it's okay the way it is. I think that having the question gives us a little bit more information, doesn't require anything. I know it seems like people ought to, and in a lot of cases, I agree they ought to, but for example, the Ethics is an example of if somebody applies and says, no, I haven't been to an Ethics Committee meeting, but they've talked to others on the committee or what have you, that's good enough for me. As regards the, as regards the issue that came up this week, that gets into a whole issue of when somebody, how one gets on a committee if the deadline or the initial appointments have already passed. And that is, I guess, a part of this question, but I'm reluctant to modify anything there. I think that we can get appropriate guidance. I think we're, I think I have learned from this particular issue in this time that you can rely on the leadership of the committee for some guidance as regards subsequent appointments, but you also have to honor the fact that the committee's been in play for some time. So it's a little bit complicated, but I think we can be sensitive to that.
Can I suggest that what we might want to do on the language on attending, have you attended a meeting, would be to say, the council encourages potential appointees to attend at least one meeting of the committee that you're applying to be on, have you done so? That way, we're encouraging, but we're not requiring.
That's good. I like that. I also, as far as late committees, maybe we can do, late entrance to a committee, maybe we can, somewhere in our guidelines or what have you, put some helpful verbiage along the lines of members who join committees after they have been established ought to show that they have touched base with both leadership and other members, or, I don't know, that's not quite right, but some common sense, helpful phrase along the lines of the one that you just put in there for recommendation for initial attendance.
Maybe we'll see if the clerk wants to come up with language on that one, because they're different cases.
Yeah. In that case, if I could say, if someone had asked me about applying for appointment to a term limited group that was already established, I would have responded that there weren't vacancies, because the council had made its appointments. So it's really the council's discretion to do something other than that. If someone had approached me with that question, I would have said, it's already established, you know, the process is well underway. It's really your discretion for how you want it.
And that's why she's the clerk of the year.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Well, maybe that's the distinction for time limited committees, maybe it's not a great idea to add people in process, but.
It only applies to time, I think it only applies to time limited committees.
I guess it would, because people who want to join committees where there are legitimate vacancies are, that's the way it is, right?
So do we have agreement on those points?
Yes.
Is that a, councilmember Clay?
I was going to say that I agree that we should make it a recommendation that they attend the meeting, but not mandatory. If we get competition for our spots, then we could use that as a deciding factor if we wanted to, but it might be helpful later on to talk about how we remove people from committees, so that when we just sort of appoint them, and then they don't show up, or, you know, we have a way to remove them.
Anything further on that point? On that topic? Move to the next one. What role should staff play in communicating information about committee-related issues to the council? Councilwoman Seaman.
In my opinion, the city-appointed committees, or the council-appointed committees, and I'm talking primarily about the council advisory committees, not commissions and the other bodies that we appoint, but the council-appointed advisory committees should report to the council themselves, and should keep their own minutes. I think that would decrease staff time, and also be a healthier relationship with the council.
Maybe if we can ask the clerk if there have been cases where advisory committees have come to you with something that you've passed along to us, or haven't passed along to us, or, you know, what's the practice now?
Well, I'd like to think if anything, if they wanted me to pass anything along, I certainly would.
Do they come to you and say, would you pass this along?
Once in a while. You might see an email that says, you know, we want to let the council, that we want to schedule a time to meet with the council, for instance. I might get a request to get on the agenda, and I'll bring that forward. Or maybe, let's say with the Nuclear Free Committee, they have some resolution that the committee desires to have the council take an action on, I would bring that forward. Typically, though, things don't come through, come through me. The groups that Housing and Community Development works with, and again, they're mainly, it's really the Arts and Humanities Commission Facade Advisory Board, COLTA, they're all not your standard advisory committees, so their, Sarah's staff does take their minutes and does that, but a lot of the, some of the groups that I deal with, they take their own minutes. It is, so really, they don't require that kind of staff support.
Would it be sufficient to say that if there are issues, particularly among advisory committees, that need to be relayed between the committee and the council, that that happened directly, and we make that clear, and that we have other ones where it's much more tightly tied to what staff does and role of commissions in particular, and that those can come through staff or directly, and that there's much more flexibility there, and just to make that clear, and that there doesn't need to be particular direction? Does that work for people? Councilmember Schultz, did you have a comment?
Yeah. I think in the case of council-appointed advisory committees, we have an obligation, since we invent these committees, in other words, what I'm trying to say is, we decide that these committees need to be in existence, and they're advisory committees, so they need, we need them to be in existence to advise us. I think what sort of tended to happen is that we decide we need these, or sometime we have decided that we need to have these committees to advise us, and then we don't use them to advise us, except in the very broad sense. And like the Emergency Preparedness Committee, we invite them to report to us periodically, once a year, maybe twice. And I think our responsibility isn't being held strongly enough, and I have suggested that we ought to have council members who designate themselves as liaisons to at least one committee, no more than one committee. It doesn't necessarily mean that that council member needs to attend the committee meetings at all. In fact, it might, the case could be made that they really shouldn't attend the committee meetings, but that the liaison is the person on the council that the committee and the committee chairman knows that they can call and ask for guidance, or information, or somebody at the council level, not at the staff level. I think that's a very important distinction, and it means that in turn, that council member has the responsibility to kind of know what that committee is involved in. And I don't think that that's too much of a responsibility to put on a council member, but I do think it would help members of these advisory committees, and there's only a few of them, have a little more faith that they're actually connected to the council, because some of the testimony that I've heard over and over again from some of these committee members is pretty much replicated from one to the next, that they, like the land use committee for the hospital, they just felt like they were kind of lost and not sure of what the council's role actually was for them. That would be something that I think would make a huge difference, and would not require very much effort on our parts to accomplish.
So do we have agreement on about communicating information about city-related issues to the council? How do people feel about the councilmember Schultz's suggestion on the liaison, which will kind of tie into this one, but I know councilmember Wright had some comments, and then councilmember Wright, and councilwoman Seaman.
Yeah, I was just, I'm fine with the first part about how the staff communicates. I think the council liaison is a little bit trickier, so I think there's a couple of things to consider here. One is that we have to be careful, because one council member doesn't speak to the whole council, so it depends on what type of guidance they're seeking. If they're seeking guidance about when should they come before the council, or how to get on, get the mayor to put you on the agenda, maybe so. I think if they're seeking guidance on like a perspective from the council, that's a pretty dangerous thing for one council member, because they might have the sense that they know what the council's opinion is, but not really, and then if they, it would seem to me to be odd. And then if they, it would seem to me to be odd if they were, I guess you could have individual conversations with all the council members and figure out what their perspective is, but that's not a task I want to take responsibility for. So that, I'm just not sure there's a lot to be gained by that. My big concern was that people would be looking for the council member to give them guidance about the council's perspective on something, but the individual council member could not do that. They might want them to, but they couldn't do that.
That's right, they couldn't.
Counselor Robinson.
Yeah, I think also, I agree with Councilmember Wright, though Councilmember Schultz, it's attractive to make that link and strengthen the link between the committee and the council. In the context of this question about what role should staff play, I get worried also that staff would have to track whatever is developed between the committee and the councilperson so that we would be fully informed, unless the councilperson, him or herself, was going to come back and fill us in as to what was going on in that committee. I'm a little unclear. I'm a little hesitant on that one as well. So I, I think like Councilmember Wright, I'd prefer to encourage committees to clarify their concerns or questions, bring them before us in some way or another. Maybe, and maybe by doing it in writing, it could be easier for them to get the guidance that they need. Not necessarily for them to have us meet multiple times a year with each committee, because that's also, it's hard to get on our agendas, so...
Counselor Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure all of us have had the experience of council, of committees coming to you and asking for, you know, what does the council think, or asking for direction, just as Councilmember Wright suggested. And it's extremely difficult to refrain from giving one's personal view, even when you think you're not giving your personal view. And in addition, as Councilmember Wright pointed out, it's very difficult for any of us to figure out what the rest of the council would say on many of the issues. I just think that it's a recipe for a lot of work that won't get us very far. I would much rather have the discussions occur in the open as well, so that the whole committee comes, it's not just the committee chair. You can hear minority views in the committee. The rest of the council can hear what people say. I just don't see the pros of a council liaison outweighing the cons in this case.
Counselor McCall.
I would absolutely agree with that, all the way down the line. I have long objected to the presence of council members on the committees. I think it's one thing for a committee to ask an individual council member about, either their personal opinion about something because they have some expertise in the area, or their opinion, knowing that they, you know, they represent just their ward versus having the council officially appoint someone as a liaison, because it messages something entirely different to that committee. And I love all you guys. I don't want you going off with the committees individually and speaking for the council.
Counselor Schultz.
Well, I'd like to challenge you, my colleagues. I sat on the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee for four more years, and I know what it feels like to be on a council advisory committee and not know whether or not the council really cared whether we met, whether we kept minutes, whether, what program that we prepared and submitted annually was actually paid attention to by anyone on the council. And those were actual things that were discussed, they just weren't feelings. And they weren't just my feelings, they were the feelings of everybody on that Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee. And I also recall that one time, a council member by the name of Bruce Williams came to one of the meetings, and the first time I had ever met the person and had a chance to sit at the same table as he sat, and I thought, "Wow, this is really neat that the council member has come to our meeting. I wonder what the reason for this is and what he's going to say." And I just was really glad that it indicated that that council member felt like what the committee was doing had some importance. And I would contrast that with the other experience we had here tonight when we made, I think, a pretty important decision about the recreation program in terms of setting policy. And we made that decision without any input from the Recreation Committee until after the decision was made, but for one person. And none of us sitting here, I think, can honestly say that we really know what the Recreation Committee thinks about, what we just talked about tonight. Would have made a lot of sense to have had the Recreation Committee give us some comments before we had this evening's discussion. So we have this advisory committee out there of recreation, people who are emotionally tied and intelligently tied to the recreation programs, and we didn't bother to find out what they think. So, but of course, we're going to ask them now and ask them to hurry up about it. And I just think that, you know, it would have been nice if, say, Dan Robinson or somebody on this council had been a liaison to that committee and sort of had been following, reading their minutes, was aware of who sits on the committee and who are the regulars that sit on that committee. For me to be able to call up Dan or ask him here in a meeting, "Well, you know, do you have any notion as to where this committee is, where they might be think, where they might be headed on some of the things that we're talking about?" But there isn't anybody on this city council that knows that, not at all. And I'm thinking, "Well, what good is this committee?" So the challenge is, is that if the idea of a liaison sounds a little frightening and more work than we want to take on, and I understand the concerns that have been expressed and agree with them, actually, that, you know, we might unduly influence the committee, then let's come up with a better way, figure out a better way of how we can help these committee members not feel so eternally lost and separated from the city council. I'm not sure, maybe I don't have the right solution, but I don't hear it myself from anybody else. Other than sort of saying, "Well, they need to write a letter or report to the city council en masse as a committee once or twice a year." You know, I think there should be much more free flow of information going on between these members, because some of these people are just as busy as we are, can't always make these meetings when we schedule them, and have a lot to say and a lot of ideas and don't feel like they need to, should stay bottled up for months on end until they have time, until the council has the time to summon them to this room to talk to us. I would hope that there'd be some way that we can get more interchange and dialogue between our advisory committees and us. Just, I'm not sure how to do that.
And let me just say that I think you're bringing up a valid concern, and what I'm hoping is that as a result of this overall discussion of how we interact with committees, that we can come up with a better way to be aware of those concerns and have those interactions. I'm just not sure a liaison is the way. Counselor Robinson, and then Counselor Snipper.
Yeah, I agree with Bruce in that nothing that we've said precludes a council member from going, just not as an official liaison. So if you perceive, Fred, that a committee is out there floundering in dire pain and can't, doesn't know what anybody on the council wants, you can go and talk to them, right? I mean, I don't think we're saying none of us can ever go to a committee meeting. You just, I think what some concerns are here are that people in the committee need to know that the person is there on their own, not speaking for the council, because it's hard for us to agree, unless we send one, unless we agree to send somebody to a committee meeting and say, "Please bring this message." But we're not, you know, so... But I think your point's also good, that if one or more of us perceives that a committee is having real trouble, then they can go and talk. And I know that also, there's just a last thing, there have been instances where one or more of us on the council has some insight into what's going on in a committee and brings that insight to one of our meetings or a conversation that we have, and it's helpful. So it is good.
If I can suggest that maybe Counselmember Snipper gets the last word on this one, and it's 11:30, and we'll let this one lie and start again with this one if we need to next time.
The only last word is, I think in addressing that problem, I believe we could develop a strategy to meet regularly with the committees. If some committees needed to meet more frequently, we could do that, and if some, you know, depending on the character of the committee, Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee doesn't necessarily need to come really often, or COLTA, they're really often, but others might need to come more often.
Certainly. It varies. I think one recipe doesn't fit all of our committees by any stretch.
So it sounds like we'll further refine an approach with dealing with committees so that we have better communication with them. Is that a fair general statement? We don't have any specifics yet. If we are to come up with specifics, we will come up with those in a continuing conversation. Counselor Robinson.
And just before we go, the one item that we haven't covered...
Oh, there's lots we haven't covered.
Well, one of the, the third bullet that we haven't covered, rather. When we come back, should we be prepared to give our own idea of whether this, each committee should be continued or not, in particular, the ones that are highlighted that are not active?
First, I think we're supposed to forget everything that's discussed and rehash that again.
Okay. Got it.
That should be standard operating procedure, that we start from scratch.
Sometimes it is.
Seems like it is standard.
We're adjourned.
Do you need that?
Here, here.
Sure, I'll put it back.
It's so great to have...